Can I go ahead and call this meeting to order? So, Commissioners, before we get started today, I want to just kind of run through what is sure to be a very busy day. And I want to make sure you have all of this on your schedule. So, we have a full agenda this morning. I have two walk-on items, so I'll need us to suspend the rules. We have three presentations. And then we also, this afternoon, we, at the end of today's meeting, I will ask for a motion to go into executive session because we have three annual performance reviews for our appointed officials today. And so, we have a very full day, and then we have a commission meeting tonight. So, we'll get started today. I have a couple of presentations to start us off, and I'm going to keep these kind of moving along because we do have such a full agenda. But we're going to start with asking Gary Seacor and Amy Young from our 61st District Court to come forward to share with us a grant they recently received, but also just to touch base on the work they continue to do with the DART program, which I know many of us are familiar with. It's the Domestic Assault Response Team. They've been doing incredible work in our community for a long time in the area of domestic violence. So, Gary, you want to fill us in on this?
Yes, I will. Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, good to see you again this morning. As you know, the 61st District Court's Domestic Assault Response Team, as we finally call the DART team, is one of a kind in the state of Michigan. It provides support services for domestic assault victims, along with families. Over 100 families are served every year. Amy Young, Administrative Assistant with my office, is here today, submitted a Walmart Foundation or Community Grant application. And also with me today is also Michael Godnett from the Walmart Alpine Avenue store. He's the director there, and he's the one that approved a $2,000 grant for the DART program. And also with me is Erica Hayes, who is also one of our DART workers. I just want to say that we're extremely grateful for the $2,000. As you know, when you review the budget every year, we have a very lean budget as it relates to the DART program. We do have a federal grant, and a supplement does come from the city, and we rely on volunteer efforts, along with contributions from Addy's pantry. So, the $2,000 goes a long way to help us provide those services. With that, I'd just like to turn it over briefly to Erica Hayes from our DART team, and then to Mike, maybe to speak to the grant.
Okay, great. Thanks. Hi, welcome.
Hello. We just want to thank Walmart for, again, the monies. The shopping spree was amazing. A lot of times, bringing the kids out of situations immediately after the incidents can be quite traumatic. So, putting together a bag full of coloring crayons, and stuffed animals, and blankets, and books, kind of gives them a little bit of, a little comfort in the process. So, thank you, Walmart, for helping us out in our shopping spree for the kids.
Yeah, thank you.
Good morning. I look forward to continuing to build our relationship in the Grand Rapids area. I've been with Comstock Park now almost two years, and I don't think we do enough in the community, so I'm going to continue to improve that relationship, and anything else I can help with, we'll continue to do. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. All right. Next, that will take us to just, I want to briefly, and let me see, I think I'll call our chief up, Chief Rahinsky, to come forward, and I just wanted to publicly congratulate one of our very own officers, detectives, who was honored just recently with the YWCA Tribute Award. And so, I'm going to say a few words about Detective Val Carrasco. I've had the real joy of knowing Detective Carrasco for a long time, actually, long before I was elected, and have known about her work in the field of domestic violence. Those of you who aren't familiar with Detective Carrasco, she's been with the department for a long time, and has spent the vast majority of her time working on domestic violence cases. So, I think it's, it's a good, we started with talking about DART, and now we get to take a moment to recognize you. So, I'll turn to the chief, if you want to say a few words, so that we can congratulate Val.
Well, I appreciate that, Mayor and Commissioners. So, just to recap, Val was recognized by the YWCA for a career worth of contributions to the city of Grand Rapids. So, I just want to read a very brief paragraph. During her tenure, Detective Carrasco has investigated over 16,000 domestic violent cases, 16,000. She's skilled in her ability to develop trusting relationships with victims that allow her to aid them in extricating themselves from violent relationships, navigating a complex and intimidating judicial system, and connecting to resources that allow them to move forward. She's currently a member of the Kent County Domestic Violence Coordinating Community Response Team, a collaboration among key participants in our community's education and intervention efforts. She's been a strong proponent of current efforts to establish a local domestic violence court, which would consolidate domestic violence cases with a single judge, and improve the speed, consistency, and sensitivity with which they are handled. So, for these contributions and more, Detective Carrasco was recognized just last week by the YWCA for a career worthy of recognition. So, Val?
Thank you very much, Mayor Bliss. I appreciate that. And Chief, I'm very honored and very humbled. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, that will take us to our third item before we get to our action items, and we want to take a moment to welcome our 2017-2018 Mayor's Youth Council. So, where's Shannon? Shannon, you want to come on up? And we have 27 amazing students this year, and I'm so glad that we're introducing them because we have our superintendent with us this morning. All 27 of the students are GRPS students, and so, yes, we should clap for that. So, Shannon, you want to have them, I'll just turn it to you to take it away, to introduce us to them this morning, and maybe we can get a picture?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor, City Commissioners, city staff. This is our, as the mayor says, 2017-2018 Mayor's Youth Council. They are ninth through 12th grade students that attend a GRPS school. And so, today is their first official day here at City Hall, so they'll be doing some activities that will introduce them to the functions of city government. And so, this is a school-year-long program. We end in May, and so, they have a lot of fun things that they're going to do, but they're also going to really learn about how this, how this place operates. So, if we can have the Mayor's Youth Council come on up, we're going to have you all introduce yourselves by your name, your school, and your grade, and then we'll just kind of do a round robin, just coming up, and circle around, and then sit back down.
Shannon, do you want them to stand up here in a circle, if you want a picture?
Oh, sure. Yeah. Okay. So, after you get done introducing yourselves, and then stand right in front of the mayor. Okay.
I'm Fatima Bidi, and I attend Ottawa Hills as a sophomore.
I'm Jemaya Duke, and I go to U-Prep, and I'm a sophomore, too.
I'm Veronica Gilbert, and I go to City High. I'm a junior this year.
I'm Violet Kaufman, and I'm a sophomore at Ottawa Hills High School.
I'm Hamish Taylor, and I attend Ottawa Hills High School as a sophomore.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Isaira Cruz, and I'm a senior at Innovation Central.
My name is Natalie Gilbert, and I'm a senior at City High School.
My name is Rowan Sisicki, and I'm a sophomore at City.
My name's Shavion Gibbs, and I am a junior at C.A. Frost.
I'm Kelsey Garrett, and I'm a senior at Innovation Central.
Hi, I'm Lily Burney, and I'm a junior at Ottawa Hills.
I'm Chi Chi Clark, and I'm a junior at City.
I'm Riley Wilson. I'm a junior at City High.
I'm De'Nique Doris, and I'm a junior at City High.
I'm Binti Abdi, and I'm a senior at Union High School.
I'm Pilar Martinez, and I'm a senior at Union High School.
I'm Bakira Mohammed, and I'm a junior at Ottawa Hills High School.
I'm Martin Harris, and I'm a junior at Ottawa Hills.
I'm Andrew Sullivan, and I'm a senior at City High School.
I'm Brooklyn Johnson. I'm a junior at C.A. Frost.
I'm Paola Diaz. I'm a senior at Union.
I'm Susaari Lopez, and I'm a senior at Union High School.
I'm Maryam Sharif, and I'm a senior at Union High School.
I'm Amelia Zsinski, and I'm a freshman at City High.
All right. Thank you. All right. So, as Shannon organizes them, I'm going to ask my colleagues in the back to stand up so they can be a part of the picture. I was able to spend some time, a couple of weeks ago, with this awesome group of students. I'm so excited to be working with you for this year. I would also like to ask our partners at GRPS to come on up and join the picture with us.
Let's join in. Come on.
This is a partnership that we have through our community's children between the city and GRPS. They're really strong partners in a lot of the work that we do, particularly around youth, and so, we'll invite them up to join us for this picture. John's on it. John's always on it. All right. Remembering to look at Steve really quickly?
Can you guys scoot him just a little bit there? Thank you.
All right, everyone, right here really quickly. One, two, three. One, two. Excellent. Thank you, Mayor. All right. So, Shannon, thanks so much. And again, I invite all of city staff and my colleagues to make sure that we give a warm welcome to this year's Mayor Youth Council members. So, welcome. All right. Next, that takes us to another presentation, another really important partnership we have with GRPS. And I'm going to ask Tom Almonte to come up and talk to us about the work that he's been doing in partnership with GRPS, along with a number of other community members, to kick off and launch our City Academy program.
Yes, Mayor, Commissioners, and this is really your vision, Mayor, it's your idea. We just got a group of a lot of passionate individuals that came together to make that a reality. And your vision was actually to create a program, an academy, to actually educate new Grand Rapidsians that are coming into our community, so they can be empowered to participate in city government. And there's a committee that came together, and I'm going to ask those that are here from the committee to stand, and they actually worked. Believe it or not, anyone that can work with me for a long period of time should be a...
Should be congratulated.
And we actually worked to create a program that I believe is going to be very successful. This year, to launch this, we actually partnered with GRPS, and this program is designed to take participants through a six-week class. Every week, they will learn about different topics, from the history about the city, to city departments, education institution, our public safety, the core system. So, it's designed to actually educate new Grand Rapidsians to actually be very knowledgeable about city government, how they can participate. So, with that said, I'm going to invite our partner, GRPS, to make a few comments. And I'm just, I got to give also credit to Lynn Hemstra. She is going to be our coordinator from the city, working with GRPS, so thank you so much. GRPS?
Thank you. Welcome.
Good morning, Mayor, and to the city commissioners, welcome from GRPS, but especially to my former board members. I have some here that hired me, so hello to you all. And to our city manager, Greg Sunstrom, Darlene, and to Anita, thank you for this wonderful opportunity, actually, to present to board, other than my own. So, this is kind of interesting to be here, to share the wonderful program that we are doing in partnership with the city of Grand Rapids. We have so many things that we do together, but this is especially something that's new and innovative, and feels great, just feels good, to launch our City Academy. We have with me Dr. Ryan Gorman, Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Maida Gunno. She is our Executive Director of Middle Schools, as well as our EL program. We have Leah Tobar. Leah is a former principal in the Grand Rapids Public Schools, and so, we have a team that worked with the city. Not only do I want to just thank the people on my team that helped, but there are many community members that helped to make this program a reality, and it really is a great program to welcome new people to this wonderful city that we love so much. The curriculum, though, is not just for new people. I think it's wonderful, and I think people that live in the city, especially students and families. There's so much there to learn about the programs that are offered in this city. I think that we could take the curriculum and expand it from new members coming to this community, to people that are residents and who may have lived here for a long time. This information not only talks about the history of Grand Rapids, but all of the wonderful services that we have in the city of Grand Rapids that you offer, that we offer, and the way that we partner. And I think that it could be a bridge for so many people in the community. So, for that, Mayor, I want to say thank you for even thinking about this. I can't imagine going to a new place and not understanding how to navigate systems. This absolutely is one barrier that will be removed, and so, we've partnered on so many things in the past, but this is one that is, is right. We welcome people in Grand Rapids, and we want people to live and work and play in our city. We want newcomers to feel that this is their place, and this is the start of it. So, with that, I say thank you. I also want to thank you for the, our Mayor's Youth Council, and to Lynn Hemstra. Lynn, you did a wonderful job, of course, because it is Grand Rapids Public Schools' children, but this is their city, and so, that feels great as well. So, I just want to thank you for that. Thank you to the Commissioners, and then thank you to Lynn Hemstra for taking that on.
Thank you. And Superintendent, thank you so much. I, you know, we all have lots of different ideas, but, you know, in this one, when you and I talked about this originally, this really became our idea, and really...
Absolutely.
...a community idea that was taken and really developed into something unique for Grand Rapids. So, thank you for your work.
I think, I think it's a wonderful idea, and we may be able to share, because I think there are other newcomers to other cities that we may be able to share. One of the things we do in Grand Rapids Public Schools is we share everything we learn with other districts across the nation, and I think that this is so powerful that it's something that we could share to help other families feel welcome in their community as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
And with that said, again, I want to say thank you to the committee that invested a lot of time in creating this. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And I'm going to add a couple more thanks to all of the members who are here that worked so hard over the last several months to bring this forward. Tom Almonte, who really took the lead, and then again, GRPS, who stepped right up as a key partner and are hosting the first, the first session. So, thank you, and thank you for being here this morning. All right. Next, that will take us to a presentation by our city manager, Greg Sunstrom, and this is a presentation on affordable housing proposals. So, I will just turn it over to our city manager to tee us off on this.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, everyone. As we know, this city seeks to ensure that all people have an opportunity to live in healthy and safe housing in mixed-income neighborhoods. Staff has assembled the Housing Now package to address affordable housing with a significant and comprehensive commitment from the city of Grand Rapids. Mayor Bliss appointed the Housing Advisory Committee and appointed First Ward Commissioner John O'Connor as chair, and Third Ward Commissioner David Allen, and Second Ward Commissioner Ruth Kelly as members. The mayor also appointed more than 30 residents and stakeholders, and several city staff. The committee met seven times, beginning in October 2016, ending with its recommendations to the city commission on May 1 of this year. The committee developed several recommendations, then prioritized their recommendations to forward 11 of them to the city commission. During this time, the city commission had four discussions on affordable housing, beginning in May of 2016, with their last one being just this last August. At that August meeting, the city commission reviewed the recommendations from the Housing Advisory Committee and directed me to develop ordinance and policy language to effectuate the Housing Advisory Committee's recommendations. Staff assembled this Housing Now package, proposed new ordinances, proposed ordinance amendments, proposed new policies, and proposed policy amendments to implement the 11 recommendations from the Housing Advisory Committee. I am pleased to report that I've also had positive meetings with potential partners to work with the city to implement the last two recommendations, that is, for the rental application ordinance and for establishing the Affordable Housing Fund. Therefore, you may wish to delay your discussion on these recommendations to see if we can establish these partnerships. With the press of business today, the volume of information included, a 107-page packet, and with the limited time that this information has been available only since yesterday, I did not anticipate city commission action for any of these items. I did not prepare resolutions for you. I am planning for time at your November 28 work session to begin, so that you can begin further discussion on these recommendations. I suspect it will take you several meetings to go through the recommendations one at a time, as some of them involve several ordinance amendments. And again, I would point to your agenda item to list specifically the proposed ordinances and policies that you would be addressing. City staff is very excited to propose this to you. This has been a body of work, as I mentioned to the mayor, one of the largest bodies of work I've seen city staff undertake in a long, long time, and I think city staff did a great job, and I'd just like to quickly recognize all of the staff that worked together to put together this proposal. Erin Banschow, Landon Bartley, Connie Bohach, Asante Kane, Eric DeLong, Jordan Eitman, Jonathan Klooster, Courtney Magaluck, Phil Schafsmann, Suzanne Scholes, Kristen Turkelson, Jessica Wood, and Carol Wood. And for them, I personally thank you for what I think is an incredible body of work to put forward, to provide the foundation for the city commission to have a good discussion and make good decisions to move this community forward. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Commissioners, I don't know about you, I have not read the full packet. It's lengthy. So, today, city managers, just to clarify, so today is really about presenting these recommendations that city staff have worked on publicly, giving us time to review them, and then we can talk about them more during our work session that we have scheduled, but then also to provide an opportunity for the community to review them and start to provide input, including all of those who served on the Housing Strategy Committee, as well as, or that task force that worked so hard on the Housing Strategy project, and then also the Housing Advisory Committee. So, we want to make sure people have a time to review these, weigh in, get feedback. We'll have a work session on them to take a deeper dive into them, and then we can decide, what do we want to move forward? Do we want to schedule formal public hearings? We can talk about process after that. In the meantime, I know that additional work is being done in partnership with the Grand Rapids Housing Commission, and as that moves forward, that too can be brought back to us for consideration. So, Commissioners, questions about that or process? Commissioner Kelly, then? Commissioner Lynn?
Yeah, I just, I just know that the public will want to weigh in, and I appreciate your outlining that there will be opportunities to do so. So, this is, it's available now for the public to start to review, the neighborhood associations, the business associations, and residents, and groups like Home For All will have plenty of opportunity to do that and give us feedback.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Commissioner?
I'm curious to know if we can get a hard copy, Greg? Because it's so lengthy, I do better reading lengthy documents when they're printed.
Surely, I can have one to you within 10 or 15 seconds, yes.
I would like, I would like one, too.
Oh, I only have one now.
We need another copy of that. I'd like one as well. It probably would be good to get, to make some available.
Sure.
And, you know, Commissioners, we've, we've talked about this a number of times, we had work sessions related to it. Last year, we know that the, the need around affordable housing, there's no one silver bullet. We know that we play really just, we're one piece of this puzzle, that this is really a partnership with the public sector and our nonprofit partners and the private sector to make sure that we have affordable housing throughout our city. And so, again, I don't want anyone to even think that this is the end-all and be-all. We know that it's not. We just want to recognize that we are part of the solution, even though it's not the entire solution. Commissioner?
No, and I just, I just want to say an additional thank you to not only staff, but the community that served on the committee to help generate these recommendations, and just as we move forward and look at these, understanding that this is, this is a step in the process, but this is also a, an idea that we're establishing a good framework for housing development and housing policy in the city, and I'm layering on some things to support affordable housing in ways that we can. And so, while I think as we moved out of the committee, you know, not everyone was comfortable with every recommendation, but looking at it holistically to say this is a, kind of a bigger framework that we can all agree to, to move lots of things and lots of, in one direction.
Yeah, thank you. And, and I think it's also important to point out, you know, this is work that has been done on these 11 recommendations, but we are also working in many other areas, including the announcement recently with the eviction court, the work we're doing with Home Share, the work we continue to do with low-income tax credits, and through our community development department. So, again, I don't want anyone to think that this is, that this is it, because there's a lot of other work that we continue to do.
Yeah. Well, and I, too, want to really applaud staff for all the hard work. We're, we're in an area that's much more complicated when you're dealing with issues like this, and in a way, as difficult as the recession was, we all came together. This is, this is complex. We're dealing with some of the social issues. We're fortunate to be in a position to be able to, able to do that now that we're out of the recession. So, I really appreciate all that you are doing, and yes, there's a huge piece of this that, the reason housing is expensive for people is that wages have not kept up. So, our Economic Development Department needs to be applauded for all the work that they are doing to try to bring jobs into this community as well. Thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you. Commissioners, Commissioner Allen?
I wouldn't say it's ironic, but it's maybe opportunistic. I got a call on Friday of last week, somebody saying that they saw that I was going to be on a panel last night at the library on gentrification, yet nobody from the library called me and asked me to be on the panel. They just, so, which is kind of weird. It was a miscommunication. It wasn't nobody's fault. So, I was literally walking in without even giving it a lot of thought, but I was part of this panel discussion last night. There were a couple of things that came up in the panel discussion that I think bear mentioning here. Number one, there, I think very clearly, it was discussed last night in regard to housing, that what's important for the city to do is pass policy and look at policy. Policy is where real change happens. That's where decisions are made. That's what governs what cities, departments, and city staff can and can't approve. So, so I think it's important to really read these policy changes carefully and understand consequences and unintended consequences of what these are going to do. So, that's the one thing. Second thing was, there was a lot of questions about how do residents engage? And so, I spoke only for me as a city commissioner, so I'm only, I'm not speaking for the whole city commission, I'm speaking for me. As this is now disseminated out of the community, what I would like as a city commissioner is not some canned response from a million people, that's the exact same thing, but I want to know people's real thoughts, and I'll be willing to meet with anybody, anywhere, anytime. You go on the city's website, my cell phone's on there, my email address is on there. I will avail myself to meet with folks, to hear concerns, comments, questions. So, I, I operate much better where I'm actually face-to-face with folks or groups of folks and have these conversations. And we might not agree, but, you know, this is a lot of, the city's done, city staff have done a lot of hard lifting now. I think it's up to us as a city commission to also continue that heavy lifting and engage, engage the community in a meaningful way. So, I'm, you know, I'm not talking about some big public forum where, I just don't think that's going to be meaningful. I want meaningful one-on-one, two-on-one, ten-on-one communication. So, for me, as a city commissioner, that's how I want to be engaged on this issue, because these are very important policies. That could change the face of the city for a long time, so I take this very seriously.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner?
Yeah, Mayor, I think you had spoken to it earlier, but I think as we work through this, and of course, this work will go well beyond me, so I see Kurt Repard back there, I'll be taking, taking the torch for...
I'll be taking, taking the torch for a lot of what's here, but just defining ultimately what our role is and what we can impact and affect through this. And I think what's here is outlined, you know, a few different, few different areas. One of those areas is to allow things to be built that can't be built right now. And then, and then I think as we look to those, those policies that, that really start to mandate things, that's where I'd like to dive a little bit deeper to figure out, how does the market react to that? And are we, are we building something that actually is going to sustain and last? Or is it just something on paper that doesn't implement and change? So again, to your point, we haven't made any of those decisions right now, but I think working, working through that, just like we have with other, other policies that we've done, and then also realizing what's that long-term funding source for some of the things that we have. And we've, in essence, set a framework, but I don't think set a policy around how we'd fund that fund, you know, going forward, meaning it's a balance in our city of increased supply of housing. And so, market-rate housing is also good housing as well, too. And I think that that's, that's one of the things that I want to make clear and talk through, because I think that's, that's how we ultimately grow and how that engine grows to allow for additional funding to do other things.
Yeah, you know, that's an excellent point, Commissioner. And, you know, I, we've talked about this before. I mean, this is, we've taken a lot of time looking at this and really wrestling with it, because just as Commissioner Allen said, you know, we don't, we don't want to make a decision today that has an unintended negative consequence. And cities across country are struggling with this issue, and they haven't figured it out, because it's complex. And because you don't want to make a decision today that 10 years down the road, you look back on and you see that it had a negative impact. So we know we need to be really thoughtful and take our, our time, do our due diligence, and really look at the pros and cons, and identify exactly what you said, Commissioner. What can we do? What can we impact? What role can we play to have a positive impact? And, and what is outside of our hands? Commissioner?
Yes, Mayor, my hope, and perhaps this is something that City Manager Sunstrom can do, is the potential of sharing these findings and all of the research that's being done, if we could possibly share that with our neighbors, with those in our first-ring suburbs. Really, to speak to this issue is something that is far greater than that of the city. But it's an issue that's affecting communities, as you've just mentioned, Mayor, all throughout the country, but in the immediate neighboring cities would be great. City Manager Sunstrom, if you could share that with your colleagues, just to make them aware of some of the things that we're trying to do, and if there's a way to learn from each other, but also, there could be some opportunity to have them take a good, hard look at what they're doing as well, to see if there's some synergy.
We can do that, sir.
Thanks.
Mayor?
Commissioner?
Well, one last thing. I know that Commissioner Jones and I meet monthly with our neighborhood organizers, as you once did, and that no doubt they are going to have questions, and I would just hope that perhaps it'll be through Stacy Stout, but there will be questions coming to us that perhaps only staff can help clarify. And if there can be an opportunity to have a Q and A at perhaps one of her monthly meetings about this, so that they can prepare their questions and we can have somebody there to answer them, I think that would go a long way to just making sure that we have a smooth pathway to decision-making.
Yeah, that's a great point. And Commissioners, I should share with you, we've, I've had conversations with some of our, our friends and colleagues over at the county and the county commission, recently had a conversation with the Essential Needs Task Force, because I do believe this is not just a city of Grand Rapids issue, it's really a regional issue. And other communities, they have taken more of a countywide approach. Our county hasn't done that yet, but I think there's an opportunity to do that in the future, in addition to our, our sister cities, our friends in our surrounding cities. So, all right? Any final thoughts? So Commissioners, happy reading. And like I said, this will be on our agenda at our upcoming work session, and then also we'll ask city staff to get this out to all of the members who served on the Housing Advisory Committee, all of the members who served on Housing Strategies, and then also our neighborhood associations, and really get this information disseminated out so people have an opportunity to read through it and start to weigh in. And Commissioners, you all have your own networks, and you can push it out through your networks as well. All right? Any final thoughts on that? Okay. Next, that will take us to our first action item. This is a resolution rescinding City Commission Policy 300-05. Can I get a motion?
Support.
All right, so I'll just turn this to our city clerk. This is pretty straightforward, but you want to speak to it?
It is. Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. This is a housekeeping item. Michigan election law has been amended, and it no longer allows for volunteers to be deputized to carry out certain provisions of election law as it relates to the ability to validate voter registration forms and picture identification requirements. Currently, the City of Grand Rapids Clerk's Office extend these responsibilities to Clerk's Office staff only, and that's to ensure that election law is well-understood, that it is consistently applied, and that it is correctly adhered to. But community organizations can continue to hold photo registration rallies and drives and events, they can collect registration forms, and then submit those to the Clerk's Office for processing.
All right. Thank you. Questions, Commissioners? All right, I'll call the question, all, all those, do you have a question? Okay, go ahead.
I know we don't have a lot of time, but I didn't fully understand. So do we have the staff available?
Yes, yes, and we've been doing this for quite some time. Again, this is a housekeeping item. We've been doing this for quite some time, so we're just cleaning up our, our policy.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, anything else? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, next that will take us to a resolution approving the request from Brass Ring Brewing Company LLC for a tavern license to be located at 2404 Eastern Avenue Southeast.
So moved.
Support. All right.
All right, and on October 10th, 2017, the Brass Ring Brewing Company submitted an application for a tavern license, which is to be located at 2404 Eastern Avenue, and the application has been reviewed by the required city departments, and it is now being recommended for approval.
All right. I see some excitement.
We've been talking about it so, for so long at the South Town Sid, and they're really excited in Alder Heights to, to have a brewing company in the neighborhood, so.
Yeah. Today's a big day for South Town Sid.
It is. That's right.
So, this is great. All right, any other questions or comments? All right, maybe we can all get invited to the grand opening.
An opening.
Right?
Tasting.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, Commissioners, item number five in your packet that was sent actually is being withdrawn, just in order to meet the timeframe for notification. So there were a couple just, notification issues we found out about, so that will be coming before us at a later meeting.
Okay.
On the 28th, okay? All right, so that'll take us to item number six, and this is our 2017 water sewer rate study. So can I get a motion for that?
Support.
All right, so, let's see, Molly? All right?
I just need to get control of the computer.
Well, this, this comes before us every year, Commissioners. I think the department has heard our concerns, and you'll see that this year, we're going to have a introduction and initiation of a 20-day comment period instead of a public hearing. I know that some of you have raised that issue in the past. And so, we are grateful for city staff to make a couple adjustments. All right, I'll turn it over.
Go ahead. Yes, this is the 24, 20, or sorry, 41st Annual Rate Study. It begins at the end of fiscal year where we, well, we close down the fiscal year and then start building what we call revenue requirement, which defines our needed decrease or increase to cover the requirements of the system per the rate study methodology. I started out with this slide here just to break down what the revenue requirements the city team has to compile information on to define, well, it's building blocks of the revenue requirements. So the green boxes are basically the costs, the inputs we put into the revenue requirement. Blue boxes, those, those would define the revenues or the credits that would lower the revenue requirement for partner communities, including the City of Grand Rapids. And then the final step is getting to the build volume. That's what we can expect to collect in the calendar year 2018, based on past usage. So, our first building block, operation and maintenance expenses. I broke down for you the different elements of the operation maintenance, maintenance expenses by division, how we divide up these costs equitably among our partner communities. For instance, if it's a cost involved with filtration or wastewater treatment, that's an integrated cost, which is distributed based on build flow and the USD size. A cost that is involved with our field ops teams would be distributed based on miles of water sewer main. For the 2017 rate study, you've seen this graph before, but you can see for the water utility, we're still operating well below our 2010 levels. For the, for the 2017 rate study, we had an increase in integrated costs by $478,000, which was a 5% increase over last year's rate study. This is mainly due to investments we've had to make out at the Lake Michigan filtration plant. But in the non-integrated system, for the individual partner communities, we saw that the costs are actually down. In this, on the sewer side of things, we've, we've seen more efficiencies with the integrated system, so the costs are lower this year. On the non-integrated system, Cascade Township actually had 161,000 less attributed to them for O and M, and this is mainly due to less requirements. We've had improvements at their pump station and main repairs. So as a result, there was less electrical cost, which affected the distribution of how we do the, the costs involved with field ops.
So Commissioners, I'd like you to, on that chart she just took away, note the incredible bending of the cost curve starting in 2010. That cost curve naturally wants to rise, as it has begun again, but the incredible reduction in costs that we had, you know, really under the leadership of Joellen Thompson when she was here, just an incredible job.
Yeah, we've had efficiencies created, shared services, implementation of the SCADA system would be examples. The next step is defining the condition of our assets. For the water system, we had over $30 million put into service between the end of the fiscal year and what we expect to go into, go into service at the end of this calendar year. For the integrated system, it was $4.5 million worth of improvements out at the Lake Michigan filtration plant. In the non-integrated system, we've had work done on pump stations, also the elevated storage tank out in Walker, and over 20 million worth of water main work in the non-integrated system. To give you the perspective from the city, City of Grand Rapids, 17.5 million of this was water mains in Grand Rapids. So, on the sewer system side, we also had work done out at the plant, 4 million of what we did put in for the integrated system is related to that concentrated waste water main, for the concentrated waste program. And then about 10.4 million in sewer mains put into service this year. And then getting to the other elements of our revenue requirement. For, for both utilities, we saw a decrease in connection fees. So we collected less revenue this year for collection fees, or connection fees for both utilities. This is, again, is something that would lower the revenue requirement. We had less of that for assistance this year. A return on investment this year, the interest rate was relatively stable, so that isn't as big of an issue. What's, one thing to take away from this slide is a main driver of the sewer rate increase we are recommending today is, there was also loss on revenue, or we collected less revenue for the surcharge, about 291,000 less. I have no carryforward from circuit breaker funds, 322,000. That is, if we don't use the city and customer community circuit breaker, what funds we don't use of that penalty revenue gets carried forward to the next rate year. Last year, we had a lot of variability among partner communities, so we utilized actually the entire circuit breaker last year, meaning there was less available this year to help drive down rates. And then with use of the circuit breaker this year, the sewer utility is fairly stable among variability between partner communities, so we only had to use 138,000 of the circuit breaker. So there was about 476,000 we, we are rolling forward to, or we didn't use relative to last year. A positive thing for the revenue requirement for the sewer system is the CSO debt service. This is an element of the revenue requirement for the City of Grand Rapids. We direct pay the debt service. We make, we build that into part of the City of Grand Rapids rates. That debt service was a million dollars less than it was last year, so we're paying off that debt service more rapidly now.
So Molly's done a good job and has also worked with us on this next item, and this is the work of the UAB Rate Review Subcommittee. The Subcommittee was appointed approximately two years ago by the Utility Advisory Board, and they wanted to look at our rate methodology to see if it still was consistent with the principles that were established in 1998. They found that it was, and that the one recommendation they would have is to try to reduce the integrated connection fee. And reducing the integrated connection fee has an impact when you're looking, if you're a, say, a septic customer or a well customer, if the cost is less to connect to city water, the idea is you'll connect to city water or sewer. And so, they went through a process of determining what, what that would be and how we could make that work, and this rate study includes the phase-in of that implementation, the beginning of that implementation. And so, normally, if you were, if you had frontage costs, and, so frontage footage costs, which is another complication, but if you were fully loaded with, to connect to water and sewer, it would be about $35,000. And to connect, if you just had a septic tank or wells, obviously much less than that. With this change, we can get that cost down to roughly $31,000, a little less than that, and that's if you have frontage footage costs, but most people don't. So the real savings comes in the area where you don't have those costs, and we can get that cost down to $14,000 for both water and sewer. So we think that this will help accelerate connections in the areas of our system where we have sewer or water and people aren't connected. And that's really important, because it helps to raise build flow over time, and we still can do our water conservation. So this recommendation, we're expecting to bring to you to discuss more fully on the 28th, and it won't be fully implemented until next year.
Okay. Commissioner Kelly has a question, and then, and you may be getting to this, but I'm also curious just to see some data on our support for families that can't afford their water bill. Were we able to meet those needs?
Totally.
Do you have a slide on that? Okay, all right, sorry.
Individual circuit breaker, yeah.
Okay, I won't, I won't get ahead of you then. So Commissioner Kelly?
So I, so it's interesting that the full cost recovery is actually going to be less than what was, I guess, estimated before, is that correct?
Well, it's, we're changing the purpose of the integrated connection fee. So initially, in the contracts, it was there to support massive capital improvements at our water and wastewater facilities. Those are generally done now and are being paid off. So now we can repurpose this fee, and so the, the cost that will be, there is actually the cost of evaluating the connection and making sure it's in the right spot and that kind of thing. So we're able to, and the meter setting fee and those kind of things. So we're able to greatly reduce the cost by repurposing the fee.
Well, and clearly, it's a public health issue, too. I mean, if, if you're connecting to the city system, sometimes, unfortunately, those septic systems are old and they're coming apart, and so this is a good thing.
So hopefully, this helps with that issue, and also, we should be able to attract more customers.
Yeah. I'll add that the current, the, the current way we calculate the rate is just a fixed amount, and then it increases by a CPI factor. So now we're linking it to the actual cost of staff time, all the elements that go into connection. So it's, from a methodology standpoint, it's much more supportable.
Yes.
So, yeah.
All right, you're up.
Okay, so now the circuit breaker. Circuit breaker is funded by collected penalty revenue in the prior fiscal year, fiscal year ends June 30th. The amount that is available for customer communities, a city and customer communities is 87.5% of that revenue. For the individual circuit breaker, which funds the asset program, that is, uses 12.5% of the, of the penalty revenue, and you can see the distribution there between water and And you can see the distribution there between water and sewer. We also identify about 80,000 from the water utility, which is just more non-operating revenue that we can help supplement that program. So if you do want more specific information, we can definitely send it to you as far as the distribution of where that, we actually give a report to the Utility Advisory Board that shows the distribution of where that money is then spent out among our retail customers.
I would like to have that information.
Yeah.
And I mean, I think we would like to know, like, how many families is that helping?
Sure, sure.
Does that prevent shut offs? So I think whatever you provide to the utility board, if you want to share it with us, that's great.
Absolutely, yeah. I did footnote, so the available penalty revenue for the circuit breaker, what is available for the city and customer communities, what we actually utilized in this year's rate study is footnoted below. The remainder, again, goes towards rate recovery in the next rate study year. Final element is the build volume. It's based on the three-year average. It's a rate smoothing mechanism that was started in 2010. You can see from the two graphs where it built in. It made our rate study less reactionary. We're not just looking at last year's behavior, we're looking at behavior of what we can predict to happen, so in a much more methodical way, using that three-year average. I have given this presentation two times before. This is the first year I can say that our average build volume increased, so it did help temper our rate increases this year. So it was up about, over 1% for both utilities.
Can I ask a question about fees? So are you projecting with our new system to pay online your water bill that will actually have a reduction in late fees? I mean, one of our hopes is that people don't have late fees?
Yeah, one of the goals of implementing this, are you talking about, like, pay it?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Are we projecting that?
Yeah, have more availability, things like that. Right now, when I project forward of what I can expect for, you know, like, penalty revenue, which funds our circuit breaker, so there's an offset there, but we hope that goes down. Right now, I'm projecting it to be level, if anything. So it's hard to gauge that behavior, but we think because it's more accessible, it'll, you know, we'll start seeing that penalty revenue hopefully go down, people will be able to, you know, keep up more.
Okay, good.
So for the 2017 preliminary rate study for the water utility, we are recommending a 2.49% increase, which is about a little over 1 million more in additional revenue requirement. For the sewer utility, we're looking at a 3.08 increase in revenue, increase in rates, which is about a $1.5 million additional revenue requirement. This is preliminary. Over the next month, we'll be fine tuning the assumptions. What I present to you, I show up in December, I'm like, well, here's what's changed. So expect a little bit of movement with the rates. To put those increases in historical perspective, this is the average changes since 2001 that highlighted. Yellow bar below shows what the average revenue requirement was. The average increase is probably the most relevant, the 1.77 for the water supply system average. So we're above the average this year. For the sewer disposal system, the average was 4.54%. We're below that average, so. And this is relative to the rate of inflation. We've managed to hold down our costs. That goes back to that graph we were talking about before. Over time, that was just concerning O and M. This is overall rate changes relative to the cost of money over time. Now, the debt coverage ratio is also a main factor we look at, and actually, it's a task in the rate study specifically. We want to achieve, oh, debt coverage is calculated, it's net earnings divided by your annual debt service. So for, in our bond covenants, we're required to maintain a senior debt coverage of 1.2. In the past year, we've also gotten the additional requirement from our rating agencies to be considered financially healthy. It's good to have debt coverage between, or an all-in debt coverage between a 1.4 and a 1.6. The water utility, we've had this discussion in the past few years of needing to build in additional revenue requirement to help build back our financial health of that utility. This is actually the first year we're not building that into. Last three years, we had. This year, it wasn't required because, you can see, we're actually in good standing for our all-in coverage at 1.46. So we didn't, you know, came back a little bit. The sewer utility, again, a little bit more stable. You'll see our all-in coverage was actually much lower back in 2013 and 14. That had to do, we still rely more heavily on junior lien debt. Now we're paying that off. But overall, you know, that senior debt coverage has always been fairly stable, but now we're getting the all-in to, again, get back up above that 1.4. So moving forward, the rate study has been distributed out to our partner communities. They, and we've already started their 30-day review period. Today is also, besides presenting to you, it's the initiation of the 20-day comment period for city of Grand Rapids specifically. On Thursday, I'll be going out to the Utility Advisory Board, giving them a presentation. And, yeah, over the next month, it's, you know, reviewing, answering questions. I'll be here also at commission meetings, too, if members of the public do have questions. We'll make sure, we try to answer everybody in that timeframe, too. And again, sometimes, things are noticed, and we were able to scrub down the rates a little bit more. On November, or December 12th, I'll be returning with two resolutions for you. The first one's for rates specific to the city of Grand Rapids. The second one is for the rates for our partner communities. The rate study is available online. We also, again, have the citizens guide this year. We changed it a little bit to include more of the background of the rate study methodology, if you were so interested to read how it's developed over time. I was, you know, it's brief, but it's, it might be interesting, so. So anyway, if there's any questions for myself or Eric, or there's some of the city teams here as well, but, yeah.
I'll turn to my colleagues. Commissioners, any questions or comments?
It's a lot, so.
It is a lot. And I want to publicly say, I know we all feel the same way. Thank you for your work. We know a lot of work goes into this, the entire department. I know you've gotten accolades over the years for the great work and the quality of the work that we do in the water and sewer department, but thank you. We know a lot of time and effort and energy goes into this process.
Thank you. Yeah, I get to be the face of it, but it is a concert effort of, you know, many municipal departments and Eric, my two financial analysts right here, and, yeah, it's, it is a process, but, you know, it's, we find it interesting, I guess. Thank God, so, thank you.
All right. Commissioner Kelly, and then City Manager, and then we'll move on.
I just did notice in this slideshow, again, the savings that you did around electrical consumption at the Lake Michigan Water Filtration Plant. So thank you, Mike Lund, I see you in the audience for that, and I appreciate your acknowledging Joellen Thompson and her work over the, I know she's gone now, but I'll be sure to pass it on to her, she's a friend. Thanks, Molly.
Yeah, thank you. All right, City Manager, final comment?
Yeah, I also don't want to lose sight of, the best news of all of this is the very modest rate increases that are being proposed. When you looked at that chart, and we had double-digit rate increases for years consecutively, this is very good news for our consumers.
Yes, indeed. Although it's not finalized yet, these are preliminary.
Preliminary, yes.
All right, thank you so much. All right, Commissioners, the next step will take us to an ordinance to enact a six-month moratorium on special land use permits related to certain alcohol approvals. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Support?
All right, Suzanne, I'll have Suzanne come up and talk about this. I know Commissioners, we've all been contacted by neighborhood associations and residents who have shared their concern with us about this. So Suzanne, thank you for working on this and bringing it forward. I know you did that in partnership with our city attorney's office, but why don't you tee this up and tell us what we're looking at today?
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. The ordinance to enact a six-month moratorium on special land use permits related to certain alcohol approvals is for special land use requests for SDM beer and wine, and STD liquor use requests that would allow for off-premise consumption. The neighborhoods have been concerned, there's been two major changes at the state level that are causing this concern. One is that Public Act 434 of 2016 was adopted, it became effective this year, and what that allows is for gas stations now, to any gas station, to sell beer and wine. So we have had a dozen requests for gas stations to sell beer and wine. The Planning Commission has been reviewing these and approving them, and the neighborhoods are concerned about the amount of those approvals. And then tangentially, and somewhat related, is also the Michigan Liquor Control Commission has been reviewing their rules, and one of the rules that they have is called the half-mile rule. That keeps liquor stores a half mile apart. So they can approve a liquor license if it's less than that within an area, subject to certain conditions. They have a couple exceptions. In that, they have been working to rescind that rule, they've been in that process. There has been state legislation that's been proposed. We're not sure if that's going to go anyplace. And the concern, I think, for the neighbors is that if we've been approving beer and wine for off-premise consumption now for gas stations, what's going to happen with liquor stores? And those liquor store approvals, or even, you know, eventually, could you imagine gas stations also selling liquor? Then that would be at every corner. So kind of what is that end result and what's happening? I think we're also at a time where we're seeing a major cultural shift in how we view alcohol. Some people have kind of this, have the traditional view that alcohol is bad, and this is a potential detriment to the neighborhoods. And, you know, neighborhoods have had poor experiences with liquor stores, by and large, now, in all cases. But then you also have, I think, this changing thought about them as far as, well, maybe they're permissible, it's an extra beverage choice if you go to a restaurant. So if a restaurant has alcohol, it's not so bad, or if it's a cooler at the gas station, maybe that's, you know, it's next to the Sobies and water, is that a bad thing? We don't know. And I think from, the need for the moratorium really comes from the desire to have a conversation about that, is kind of where are we as a community? How do we really want to regulate off-premise consumption sales for SDM and STD licenses? Give us a little bit of a pause and some time to reflect on that and have everybody come to the table. What we would do is an ad hoc committee, similar to what we have done in the past for special topics such as this, whether it was electronic message centers or wood burning furnaces, we've had a couple here and there for the moratoriums that we bring to you from once in a while. The moratorium covers for six months or until a policy change is recommended. So it could be shorter than that. I don't expect that we would go longer than six months. If we did, we would have to come back to you for authorization. And what this does is suspend requests that the Planning Commission would hear for those use requests until we've made some policy decisions. Good, you know, which way do we want to go? If we decide that gas stations, and we're regulating only 5% of the floor area or less for alcohol sales, which is kind of what the Planning Commission's been being approved, then maybe we need to consider changing the ordinance, so it's just administrative approval rather than making the neighborhoods worry about it. Or if it's a serious concern by neighborhoods and it's going to cause problems, then we need to think of a different regulatory approach. So I think there's just a lot to talk about, and this moratorium just gives us that time for that conversation without the pressure of having requests written for the Planning Commission.
And Suzanne, can you remind us, buddy, when we do have an issue with establishments selling liquor, what is the process to respond to that? So let's say we have an establishment where we have significant uptick, I mean, we've had this before in some of our neighborhoods, significant uptick in crime or police response to the site, or complaints from neighbors. What is the process? That if there has been an approval and then there are significant complaints, what does the neighborhood do? Remind us of that.
It's really a police issue. The police have to go and monitor the site, whether it's for that, or we have venues that we've had issues with in the past with alcohol and noise. It really becomes a police issue. And the value of doing this through zoning and evaluating it is somewhat preemptory. You're trying to solve, you know, you're trying to prevent a problem from happening in the first place. When we do these land use approvals, is to really determine if it's the right use. But when we do grant them, we're giving a property right. So the use stays with the property, not with the owner. And the challenge always is, is, you know, you might have Bob, who's a great guy, who's coming, and everybody says, yep, he'll run the liquor store just fine, and then Sarah buys the liquor store, and she's terrible at operating it, and all sorts of things happen. So there's always this balance of who's the operator versus the use, and how do we regulate that?
And then that goes to MLCC. So if there are issues, then they would be documented, PD would document them, and then that ultimately goes back to the liquor control.
They do, and the City Commission can rescind those liquor licenses when they come, but it's a very lengthy process, as you know, you've been through that before. And so it is kind of this thoughtful approach on what is best and how do we do it, really to prevent that from happening. It can be a big burden on neighborhoods to try to do all that enforcement, as well as city resources. And you do get into the questions of public health, safety, and welfare, if there are police issues, you know, public safety issues that we have to constantly attend to. And so that's why we try to manage it through land use approvals, but then we also have another layer of police power ordinances around nuisances and noise and other issues.
Okay, all right. I'll turn to my colleagues here. Commissioner O'Connor?
Yeah, thank you. The city should not be in the business of regulating legal enterprises. We live in the United States, we have antitrust laws to protect free enterprise and open and competitive markets. If this were to pass, are we going to start limiting the number of pizza places or coffee shops? Or how about breweries? We just approved a tavern license for a brewery with zero fanfare. That brewery has 2,400 square feet of space. Adding packaged beer or wine to a gas station is typically one cooler door. In an existing business where they already sell regulated items such as tobacco and have staff trained to check IDs and do it, to be in compliance with the law. Previous Planning Commission approvals, there have been nine since June, allowing beer and wine only to be sold in gas stations, that have ranged from 0.5% to 4.2% of the retailer's total floor space. If you add up the square footage of all nine of those approvals, it's only 380 square feet. Once you approve a defined space, that defined space is all that they can sell from. So if you approve one cooler door without asking for an additional approval, they can only sell from one cooler door. This precedent's been set based on state law. In Grand Rapids, if we limit this, this is creating a scenario of unfair competitive advantages to those licenses that have already been issued. So we've given them to some gas stations, and now we're going to say, nope, now you can no longer compete. You have a six-month delay to be able to be competitive to the gas station down the street. That's creating an unfair market. As we look at the half-mile rule, it does not stop the issuance of new licenses. It only creates unfair advantages to some retailers who can benefit by not having competition locate where competition chooses. Remember, businesses open and close every day. Those who run a good business are likely to succeed, and those who run a bad business often fail. However, if we don't allow competition, these bad actors, whom I think many people are afraid of, have no pressure to improve or operate their business in a better fashion. They're protected from having to improve their business because they have a monopoly on their market. So we're all okay to celebrate the issuance of liquor license at places where people can come, they can drink, and they can drive home, but we're not okay to say, hey, I can grab a six-pack from the gas station on the way home and go to the safety, comfort, and peace of my own home and enjoy a beer, a bottle of wine. This is just absolutely ridiculous, and there's no way we should do this.
Okay, thanks, Commissioner. All right, others who wish to be heard? Commissioner?
Yeah, I think you made some good points. You know, I want to talk a little bit about the neighborhood input base perspective. As it stands right now, when there's a request, it goes to planning, right? And that body, as we do with all the zoning and land use we have, deliberates and decides based on a number of factors, and neighborhood impact is one of those factors, is that right?
Yes, they look at detriment to the neighborhood when they make their decision as one of their standards.
Yeah, so, you know, for me, my thought is that we already have a process set in place where we have a body that we appoint and trust to make decisions on all land use issues. So, you know, for me, when we say, no, you can't, you know, decide on this or what, I, you know, I feel that that just, you know, disrupts what's out there in the market in our city, and that's, you know, for me, I feel we have a process in place. So I don't support this because I think it just adds a layer on of saying no, and I just really don't like to interact and interfere with the market unless there's a, unless there's a public safety issue and concern. And if that can be explained, maybe I'd be more open to support this, but that's my thought.
All right, others? Commissioner?
Yes, I have been one of the recipients of requests from neighborhood Yes. I have been one of the recipients of requests from neighborhood groups to look into this. And I think, Commissioner, you mentioned public safety, and that is exactly one of the concerns. And I think that by pausing, taking a look at this, we'll be able to be better informed. And there's nothing wrong with that. You know, I touched base with most of you, and as you said, you're willing to debate this. And, but I think we don't want to debate until we have more information, including what we can and cannot do, based on state law. But every now and then, something comes up like this, like you referenced with other things. It certainly came up to our Planning Director. People were unhappy with some of the decisions that were made. And whether it's this, or you referenced some other examples, Airbnb was another one. We put together a group. The, the food trucks were, was another thing. So sometimes we have to pause and take a look and do a deeper dive and better understand this. And hopefully, we'll get some data from the Police Department, too, to better understand if there are certain communities that are impacted more than others. And I think that's part of our equity initiative as well. So I'm willing to pause and look at it and have that debate. It's great. We are always good about putting people with different perspectives around that table together. And often, we come to compromise, but that's the way we do things in Grand Rapids. And so I'm in support of the moratorium.
Others who wish to be heard? Commissioner?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I, too, have been the recipient of calls and conversations from neighborhood associations. And I actually think it's wise to pump the brakes and take a moment to pull together some folks to take a closer look at this. I can understand the potential of this being seen as us, for lack of a better term, overstepping our boundaries. But I think that there's also value in really considering the very legitimate concern of neighborhood associations, based on the fact that there is, you know, significant presence, retail presence in neighborhoods already, that, in which the option is there to buy beer and wine. And yet, at the same time, there's, I think, again, concern about how the process even took, how the process was carried out, or how there was, I guess, one instance in particular, in which there didn't seem to be real consideration for what the neighbors were saying, for an item that the Planning Commission was considering. And so, again, I think there's wisdom in holding off. And if it, if that body comes back and, and states that there needs to, that, that this is indeed overstepping, or that we need to, you know, let this thing play out according to the state, then so be it. But I don't think there's any real, there's any real harm in a six-month break or delay.
Commissioner?
I actually don't support this. I got a call from one neighborhood association that was upset about, and what I did was I actually went back and talked to members of the Planning Commission to get the details. And the neighborhood association didn't make the case that the Planning Commission could legally deny the application. And in fact, when it actually came for a vote, nobody from the neighborhood association actually showed up for the vote. So they're complaining about it after it got approved. The concern that I have is that this law was passed almost a year ago. So there's been almost a whole year of some of the larger stores having a competitive advantage, Meyer, some of those other groups. Now, all of a sudden, we're going to put a moratorium, and some of the more smaller independent operators don't have an opportunity for the next six months. And frankly, you know, there's very clear, what I see right now, two things. I see there's very clear guidelines and opportunities for a neighborhood association to oppose this. And there's a right way to do it, to the detriment of the neighborhood, and there's data and things they can put together. Not just to say we oppose it because we oppose it, but there's specific guidelines for them to, to present to the Planning Commission that gives the Planning Commission the opportunity to vote no. And if it becomes a problem in a certain location, there's very specific remedies for how to deal with the problem. So I do think that this is a bit of overreach, and I'm concerned that we're setting a precedent similar to what Commissioner O'Connor, and he and I didn't even talk before this, similar to Commissioner O'Connor, we're setting a bad precedent, you know, what, what next? What next? Will we put a moratorium on this, this state? If this was a concern for us, then we should have been talking about a policy on January 5, after the state passed their legislation, if that was a concern then. So, but I, I got, I got calls and concerns from one neighborhood association.
All right. Commissioner Lanier?
Yes. So I, too, have gotten calls. And I think it's important to fully understand the law that was passed, as you mentioned, Commissioner Allen, about a year ago. So what typically happens is a law is passed, and we don't recognize the impact of this change until we have these concerns that will come before us. And, and perhaps we need to do a better job at proactively looking at when a law is passed and, and making decisions about how that law impacts the community. But, you know, it's here now, and we're at this point where I feel like we need to get our bearings around, to educate the public about what their options are. And I struggle with a neighborhood, or, or people from a neighborhood not making it to a Planning Commission meeting that's held at 2:00 in the afternoon on a business day, being the reason that we can't support pausing for a moment to be able to get a full understanding in helping to educate our neighborhoods about what this means for them and what it doesn't. But I do have a question for you, Suzanne, about SB 501. Just curious to know, how long do you think, or how long are they estimating for the decision to be made about?
That's still in committee. And there, they had a hearing on it. It's, it can sit in committee forever. I mean, until they move it to the floor. So we haven't heard, and I can double-check with Karen Farick, but Karen, last time I talked with her, it was in committee. So I don't think it's going to move. There definitely, the groups that supported the, the beer and wine for gas stations also are supporting the lifting of the half-mile rule. So a lot of the big box stores, pharmacies, those types of things are, are looking to have those restrictions lifted.
Okay. So Mayor, I don't know what your plans are in terms of the next step, if we were to approve a moratorium. If you will have a committee of people to get together to kind of talk through it. But I, I definitely would support that as well. I don't know if that's, you know, it's not necessarily a part of this, but I think that's important so that we can figure out a way to educate the public about what their rights are, and what their options are in the event that there is, I think, and you asked that question, it's a really good question. What happens when you're faced with a bad neighbor? And if that neighbor happens to be a business, and it happens to be one that's, you know, selling alcohol, and you're tying them being a bad neighbor to what's happening or what's being sold there? But I do think, Commissioner O'Connor, you made a really good point about the approval of some alcohol sales, and not necessarily allowing people to be able to purchase and then go home, where they wouldn't be driving after having, or consuming alcohol. So I think that there are some really good valid points and concerns being made. And I think that's why it's important to sit around the table to talk about how to address those.
Yeah. Well, and I, I'll let Suzanne speak to her thoughts about, about if this is approved, what the process would be. And is six months needed, or can it be shortened based on concerns? Could it be a three- or four-month moratorium, if that's an option? And that's, Commissioner, that's exactly what I was thinking. I mean, having gone through trying to address issues around liquor sales in an establishment, in a neighborhood, and how difficult and arduous that process is after the fact, once there's problems. Being proactive, I think there's some real value in being proactive and thinking through this. This is a significant change. And I, I don't think we had a good sense of the impact until we have a number of requests come in. And, and so I think your points are also really valid. And I hear what Commissioner O'Connor is saying, too. I think that's a good point. So Suzanne, can you speak to that? And then I'll, I'll see if there's any final questions or comments.
Can I ask one quick question?
Yeah.
How many people are currently in process of seeking an approval that have not been passed yet?
To my knowledge, we have, I'll look back at Chris, three? About three requests. To, to Commissioner Lanier and Mayor Bliss's point about the request, and how could we have not seen this coming? We, we knew it was happening, but I think what's been concerning is the pattern of decision-making by the Planning Commission from the neighborhood's perspective. So that they've had 11 requests, they've approved every request.
Right.
And so I think that is, you know, if there was kind of a mix, and, and the neighborhoods were feeling responded to, I don't think that we would have felt that there was a need to suggest a pause. But I think that there's some frustration on the part of the neighborhoods feeling like the Planning Commission isn't listening to their concerns. So I think that's kind of the dynamic that we are trying to wrestle with, too, is kind of the community engagement, community input in the process of the Planning Commission's decision-making, and the standards, and how those are applied, and, and how we look at alcohol uses in general. So I think it was just a pattern of decision-making, made it rise to this level. Otherwise, it probably would have been, would not have been an issue. It doesn't remove the SDD question, which is still pending. So if the MLCC lifted that rule, and their, that legislation stuck in committee, and nothing happens, then we would expect to get those requests. And I think that's from the neighbor's standpoint, is if this is the pattern of decision-making for SDMs, what will it be for SDDs? And so the process that we would use is we would identify about six to 12 people, not, we don't do a huge committee. An ad hoc committee of people with varied interests, as Commissioner Kelly spoke of. We try to find somebody who has experienced, you know, had a bad experience, or is not, you know, is, has had a lived experience being near a liquor store. We would invite the Police Department, because they have a lot of the crime data that typically comes up in conversations around this type of use. Someone from the Health Department would probably also be at the table. And then certainly advocates, the Chamber of Commerce, we would ask for a representative from there, as well as a business owner of a gas station who has applied, or has already received their licenses. So we try to get a diverse group to kind of figure out what that balance is and what the concerns are. And there is, alcohol is a very difficult topic to discuss, because is it because of the alcohol that bad things are happening around that store? Or is it just, you know, a coincidence? It's, you know, that what is that correlation, correlation between off-premise sales and the establishment itself and the management? So that's something that we probably need to untangle a little bit more.
And then Suzanne, my question about, does it have to be six months? Can we look at, I mean, what's a reasonable timeframe where you think we can pull people together to have this conversation?
I, I wouldn't do any less than four months, just because if there is recommended changes to ordinances, it has to go to the Planning Commission. The notice to the Planning Commission, go through the Planning Commission process before it comes to the City Commission. So we wouldn't want the moratorium to lift before there's new policy in place, if there is to be new policy. So you could probably do four months, but I would recommend not doing less than that, because we would need to have those meetings. And so by the time we got everyone together, especially with the holidays coming up, with, with Thanksgiving and Christmas, and we might get one meeting in between, before the end of the year. And then we had a meeting in January and February with language in March, March, April. So that's the challenge, is trying to figure out from a scheduling standpoint.
All right. I'll do Commissioner O'Connor, and then Kelly, and then I think I will, if no one else has questions or comments, I'll call a question. Commissioner?
Yeah, I just think the challenge in all this is we're trying to use land use tools to regulate end-user behavior. And that's not the proper place to do that. That if someone wants to get a beer, a wine, or a drink, they're going to find a place to do it. And so it's not, it's, it's like substance abuse. It's, it's like the opioid crisis. Or if, if people have the behavior characteristics that lead them to do something detrimental to themselves or to others while under the influence, they're going to figure out how to get it. So us trying to regulate where this can be with, with a land use tool is not the proper place. And I think we're also trying to, there are bad actors. We all know of the bad actors in some neighborhoods in Grand Rapids, is where people prey on the, those less vulnerable, or those more vulnerable. And so I understand that concern. But at the same time, if, if a good user is going to come in the market, someone who's going to do something that is not just selling of beer, wine, or spirits, that it's a, they're going to sell groceries, or they're going to sell fresh meats, or they're going to sell cheeses, or they're going to do something that, that has a bigger impact, that we would say would be something beneficial to my neighborhood, you just said no to that for the next six months. So someone who's in process of saying, trying, trying to buy a building, to say, hey, I'm going to, I'm going to put my dream store in here, so I can sell home goods and cured meats, and suddenly they, I mean, if, ask any small retailer that sells that sort of stuff, you need to have the alcohol component to run a successful business. We keep saying we want more retailing in Grand Rapids, but by saying you cannot sell beer, wine, or spirits as part of your product mix, you're essentially limiting the number of new business opportunities that can come. And I just, this is a terrible precedent.
Suzanne, is this, this is specific to gas station requests?
It's for the half-mile.
It's for all S, for all SDM beer and wine to go.
The half-mile rule hasn't been rescinded yet from the ML?
No, they've had hearings on it, and they've been in process.
But that hasn't happened.
But this is saying, even if I want to open one a half-mile away, then I, we're not going to issue a license. This is, we're saying no to all SDM and SDD licenses.
Right. But, but this isn't specifically related to the half-mile, I mean, the half-mile rule hasn't been rescinded yet.
It has not, but we would expect that it will be shortly, because they've already had the hearings, and the MLCC chair has already spoken when it went into committee to create the law, the half-mile rule law, the MLCC chair spoke against it. So we, just, the clock is, is just a matter of when.
Okay. All right. Any final thoughts?
Well, I just wanted to add that. I, I hear where Commissioner Allen is coming from, but I think another point of view in terms of the Planning Commission and the City Commission is that we are putting them in the middle. We're putting staff in the middle of this, and we're putting the Planning Commission in the middle. So having this conversation with the community, just even to clarify things, is going to be helpful, I think. We want to have faith, we want residents to have faith in those institutions, in the Planning Commission, and finally, in us. So I think this is worth doing this. And, and in terms of availability, there's a wonderful analogy to this. John Hockskins did a study around guns, soon after the Newtown situation, about suicide. And I'll give you this one example. In, in Central Park, they simply, they had a, a bridge that was called Suicide Bridge. People would jump off it. And all they did was put a guardrail up above, and it stopped it. So there are ways, I think, that we need to look at behavioral science, and we need to dig into this and get some data about what's happening in, in surrounding neighborhoods. Is there a difference? And, and that can perhaps guide our decisions. I'm certainly all for beer and wine and alcohol sales, but I think that the half-mile rule, you know, put some, some parameters around it that might be helpful for the community. It's just worth examining that, that's all.
The, the good news is we already have a lot of data in our system. So we have been mapping where the locations are, as well as hours of operation for outdoor activities, and all in our GIS system, as well as the crime data. So I think that the turnaround as far as analysis goes should be relatively short.
Right. Okay. All right. Any other final questions or thoughts? All right. I'm going to call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Okay. I'm going to have you raise your hands. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Okay. Carrie's on a 4-3 vote. All right. Thank you, Suzanne. Suzanne, can you follow up as soon as possible with the, a list of individuals that you're going to invite to be a part of this ad hoc committee, and share that with the entire commission, and then also maybe lay out a plan to review this? And then with some, at least a, a draft timeline of when you expect it to come back?
Yeah, we can certainly do that. And if there's anyone in particular that the commission believes should be on the group, we certainly welcome any suggestions.
Okay.
And then for this evening, you'll be asked for your resolution for immediate effect.
Okay. Great. Thank you. All right. Next, thanks for, I think that's a good discussion. All right. Next, that will take us to a resolution approving a professional service agreement with Smith Group JJR for an area-specific plan for the South Town Quarter Improvement District. Can I get a motion?
Support.
All right. Hi, welcome.
Morning, Commissioners. So as some of you may be aware, South Town Quarter Improvement District has been going through the area-specific planning process this past year. Beginning in August, they set, and I'll request proposal for a consultant to help with the community engagement. And in September, they engaged, they had received about four different responses for that, proposals. And so this past September, they've also interviewed them and, and what have you. And then finally, settled on one consultant and voted to accept that proposal this past, at a special meeting this past week, September 8, November 8. And basically, to talk about those details, I'll turn it over to the court.
Mayor, Commissioners, this is an exciting step for the South Town Sid. They've been working very hard over this past year, meeting frequently to get to this step in the process. Just before the end of the last budget, I believe this was for you as a budget transfer. We had an initial budget for this of about $245,000. Actually, going through this process, looking at some of the existing resources, as well as going through the RFP process, we've been able to reduce that overall budget closer to $214,000. And this actually includes two parts. So there's the initial contract amount with the Smith Group JJR, which is about $150,000 of that. Within that, and we tried to tie that really to closely align to the fundraising that's already- already been accomplished for this project as well as far as city sources and our grant requests that are out. Within that scope, there's also some opportunities for additional services in there. For example, once they get through phase one, if they want to do a more detailed marketing approach or additional communications or other things that, you know, come up that need to strengthen the process, we have provided room in the budget for that, as well as some things that may not be directly covered by the scope if we want to do some additional advertising or outreach, you know, beyond, beyond what's covered by the scope. So, so we have brought that forward to you today with, with the scope of work developed with a consultant in the South Town Sid and ask for your approval to, to get them moving. One other piece of it that's been really positive going through the process, we were initially looking at about a one-year timeline for their area-specific plan. We think we may actually be able to shorten that up. We've included it for a year just in case, but we're hoping it may be closer to eight to 10 months.
Great, thank you. I am going to turn this over to Commissioner Lanier. I know she has been working diligently on this for a very long time. So Commissioner Lanier, you want to add anything to this?
I'll just be brief. When we were making the decision about the consulting firm, we really had a lot of really good proposals before us. And one of the things that made Smith Group JJR, I think, rise to the top was their partnership with Street Sense, is it Street Sense?
Yes.
Yeah, and because this is a Sid that's embarking on the ASP process, having strong business districts was the priority for, is, is the priority for this ASP work and Street, and Street Sense has this strategic business district development process that they follow. And we're excited about having both organizations together to do the work for our ASP process. I'm happy that it was reduced down to $150,000. Thank you Mayor for conversations and help with that.
Absolutely glad to.
And I'm just excited to, to get this work done. We have been meeting for a long time. We'll start with our stakeholder group, which is a larger 20 some odd people, I think.
23, 24?
23, 24 people who are on that group. The consulting firm will be here at the end of this month, if this is approved today. And they'll be working with the board, as well as the stakeholder group. And so I think then the board can kind of get back to the business of, of doing Sid work. Chama will be excited about that because we've been spending so much time talking about this that we're not doing as much work on Sid-related things. So we're excited and, and happy to, to get this ball rolling. And thank you to both of you for, we've been meeting weekly. So thank you to both of you for all of the energy and time you've put into preparing for all of the meetings that we've had and, and following up and things of that nature and keeping us on track. I appreciate all the work that the two of you have put into this.
Yeah, thank you. This is an exciting project to see move forward and it's, it's been a long time in the making. So thank you for your work as well and all of the members of the Sid. Any other final thoughts? All right, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. Thank you. All right, I'm going to move us along because we are running late, which I figured we would because of our agenda today. So next, we have a resolution setting a public hearing and introducing an ordinance to amend fifth, chapter 51 Streets for Pedestrian Safety and Accessibility.
So moved.
Support.
All right.
We may need Tom to the rescue here. I got it?
Yeah, just give us an overview. I mean, we're familiar with this already because we've been briefed on it, so welcome.
So good morning Mayor and Commissioners. The resolution in front of you, as well as the next item on the agenda, are part of a combined package for pedestrian safety improvements in Cedar Grand Rapids that Suzanne Schultz presented to you on the 24th. Per your recommendations, we also presented to the Mobile GR Commission last week. The, the overall package includes items that, that were, that we don't need a public meeting for, including Vision Zero, adoption of Vision Zero, the adjustments to art in, art in the public right-of-way. So not only on local streets with ADTs lower than 4,000 ADT, within sidewalks as long as it meets the requirements, federal requirements and those identified in the MUTCD, and other items in the public right-of-way, including light poles, signal cabinets, and the sidewalk. So the, the three ordinances that do require a public meeting that we intend to set on the 28th are, the first is, sorry, the, sorry.
No, that's okay.
Changing the ordinance to require developers to maintain the sidewalk, as well as bike lanes adjacent to their construction projects. Currently, the default is not to maintain that, so this would change that to make that the default and have them provide exceptions to, to violate that or not to violate that, to, to switch from that. And in that case, they would still have to provide a safe and clear path for those users.
So this sets the public hearing?
Yeah, so sorry.
For the 28th?
Thanks Kristen. Other item is no parking in, within the bus stops. So within or near the bus, bus stops to provide adequate room for buses to pull into and up adjacent to the curb so that patrons can safely mount or board and deboard the bus. And then the final item is changing our ordinance regarding pedestrian crossings, changing the word yield to stop, requiring vehicles to stop for pedestrians in and entering the crosswalk to produce any ambiguity about what vehicles are supposed to do with pets in the area. So the intent is to provide the public meeting on the 28th, where you guys will be introducing that ordinance, as well as receive public feedback. And then the overall package will be voting on your, your hearing on the 12th.
Great, okay, thank you. Commissioners, Commissioner?
Yeah, Mayor, just a thought as I'm reading through this and I see the restrictions on vehicles and what they, what they have to do, excuse me, but I'm, I'm thinking back to, you know, two years ago, when we talked about the public safety and pedestrian at busy intersections around, around panhandling. And I think we should probably talk about the impact here because I think when we're talking about getting to zero accidents there, if there's behaviors or other things that, you know, cause that, that, you know, to be more, I think that that might be where I would look to maybe add something around this, as long as it's comprehensive in nature like we talked about before, around ultimately finding a way to really get at the core crux of the problem, meaning that the services that we use to offer jobs and things. But I just think like not, not having this in here is, is missing a segment that gets us to that vision zero.
So you're concerned about individuals, panhandlers that go into the street?
Correct. Correct. Because what, because what we see here is all a vehicle-related. And so just, just wanted to make sure that, just as, as we look at things around, you know, trafficking in bikes, there's safety on both sides, is that there's safety on the pedestrian side that has to be addressed here, I think, to get us to that goal.
Yeah, thank you Commissioner. And I know, I think everyone knows our city attorney is working on a summary of legally what, what is within our, our, what's, what's within our ability under the legal parameters with recent court cases. So maybe city attorney, you can work on getting that to us sooner rather than later?
Right, we're finessing to have it ready for the next commission.
Oh, good, okay, good. I knew you were working on it, on top of a number of, of other things. So thank you for bringing that up. I know that we're working on it and that that's a priority as well. All right, other Commissioner?
Well, just want to encourage the commission to take a real close look at these proposals. And if you have questions, perhaps reach out to Josh Nairmore. We had quite a discussion at Mobile GR Commission. And I want to remind you that we just recently had, the police department was out educating people and hopefully, maybe Chief, you could get one of these for the other commissioners. Just want to read this one stat. In Grand Rapids, 565 pedestrians were struck by motor vehicles in the past five years, more than two crashes every week. Eleven of these people died and 87 suffered serious injuries. So this is Grand Rapids and this is a reason we're looking at vision zero.
Yeah, and is exactly why we're doing all the work around, being a safe place for everyone, pedestrians, cyclists, ski boarders, rollerbladers. All right, any other questions or comments? So Commissioners, this just sets the public hearing, will give us time to review it, as well as take a public comment. So I'll call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. Next one as well is a resolution setting a public hearing and introducing an ordinance to amend chapter 181 General Traffic Regulations for Pedestrian Safety. Any, oh, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Support.
All right, anything to add to this one?
No, it's, it was included in my previous statements.
Great, thank you. All right, Commissioners, any other questions or comments? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, Commissioners, next, that will take us to an update on the city manager recruitment process. We have Joellen here with us today. I know all of us have spent quite a bit of time hearing from Joellen as she's worked through this process over the last month. And we'll just invite Joellen to take it away.
Mayor, we have Joellen Earl from Govern HR USA for the viewing public and her partner, Brian Cotton here. I'm going to turn it over to Joellen while we pass out some information.
Great, thank you.
Is the PowerPoint on here?
Joellen, welcome.
Good morning.
Welcome back. I know you've been here a lot lately, so good to see you.
I have been. I'm looking for the PowerPoint.
So as Joellen gets this teed up, hopefully we'll be able to make it work. Commissioners, I, I know that you have received information from Joellen over the last couple days, some drafts. I know some of you have given feedback already. Our hope is to review this today with Joellen and give her the green light to move forward with getting this position posted. And so she'll walk us through what she's done so far, but then also the draft of the, of the candid profile. All right?
Okay, good morning. Happy to be here and thank you all for your input into the profile. And I'm going to quickly go through the community outreach process and the other individuals and stakeholders that I spoke with in order to receive input for the profile. So the outreach process consisted with telephone conversations with all of you and with your newly-elected commissioner. In addition to that, we developed some surveys that were made available to the city's employees, as well as the general public and stakeholders through 311. And we got that information out right after the meeting that I was here in, in mid-October. Also, it was communicated to the employees to please respond to the survey because it was coming directly to me to maintain some confidentiality. As far as the outreach is concerned, I was here on six different days in October and two, or four days in October, two in November. And when I came on some of those days, I spoke with many staff members, about 50, including the current city manager, who indulged me by being the last interview. And I really appreciate that. I really wanted to wrap up with him and get his insights based on everything I heard. So thank you very much for that. I spoke with your former city manager, the city attorney, city clerk, city treasurer, one other elected official, the city comptroller. I also spoke with your former city attorney, your deputy city manager, your top management team, and your union leadership. So that was about 50 individuals with those staff members. In addition, addition to that, about 80 individuals representing a variety of stakeholder groups that you all had input into inviting to meetings, were invited and I met with all of those groups over the same period of time. And those groups were members from the business community, your public partners and leaders, your neighborhood businesses and your locally-owned businesses, your community partners and leaders, nonprofit leaders, faith leaders, neighborhood association directors, the Urban Corps and Equity PAC, and a millennial group. So as a result of all of those meetings, I have some information for you. And what you have in front of you is a copy of my slides, as well as the information that has been aggregated through your 311 from the community survey. The employee survey, as I said, I have that and the statistics from it are in the PowerPoint presentation. There isn't a separate document for the employee survey. So you can see, we received 962 community surveys. And what I'm showing you here is by zip code, the vast majority of them came from your major zip codes 49503 up to 49507. Pretty evenly distributed, you can see the different percentages, although the majority of it came from 49503. And then the remaining zip codes had less of a response. And you did receive 77 surveys from individuals outside of the city. Also, you can see the breakdown of who responded and how they identified. Again, the vast majority here were residents of the community, followed by the business owners and your city partners and community leaders, as well as nonprofit leaders. I want to highlight here too, a lot of the meetings that were held were not very well attended. And I did speak with some people about why, people told me they did take it upon themselves to respond to the survey. Other individuals sent me the questionnaire that we gave to them when they are invited individually, so I received that feedback. In addition to that, I made phone calls as well to some business leaders and to the chamber. So we, I used other mechanisms, other than just meeting with people in person to get feedback. But these, this response is just who responded to the survey.
And this is just the community survey, not the employee survey?
Not the employee survey.
Which is additional several hundred.
Yeah, I'll get to that one. And then as far as kind of the breakdown of who responded, if you look by race, you can see the majority again were white or Caucasian. That was about 65% of the responses. So the remaining 35% were either Hispanic or Latino, black or African-American. The Hispanic or Latino community was about 9% and the black and African-American was about 8% and then the remainder follows. But 87% of it was responded to by people who identified as white or Caucasian, Hispanic or Latino, black or African-American, or other. And then there's the remainder. The next part of this slide, I think, is really interesting when you look at the age demographics. And I know a lot of the young people just left the room, but what I thought was really interesting was 40% of the respondents were between the age of 18 and 34. So I thought that was, that was interesting. But you can see here the breakdown based on age. And then we asked a few questions of the community and also of the employees, which I'll get to. But, and there's some, there's some similarities, which I thought was really terrific as well. The first question was top leadership traits, and they were ethical, trustworthy, and communicative. Top management styles from the community were collaborative, strategic, and innovative. And then we asked about abilities and skills. And if you look at the first two, you can see they're almost, they're almost opposite. The first one is the ability to think strategically and remain focused on the city's long-term goals. And the second one is the ability to challenge a status quo and make changes if needed. Followed by that, to be a good steward of city resources, skill in communicating with staff, the board, and other stakeholders. And then of course, the ability to form positive and effective working relationships with stakeholders. The fourth question had to do with experience and we asked, what would the background be for the individual? You know, local government experience, would that be preferable, as well as private sector, academic, or other? And you can see with the community, about 65% thought that city management or other local government experience would be helpful. 15% private sector, 11 academic, and other, 9%. And then here's some examples, community leader or organizer, military, nonprofit leader or volunteer, as other experience that could be preferable for someone in this position. As far as the employee concern, I'm sorry, the employee survey, we received about 275 responses to the survey. And the leadership traits, you can see here, there's ethical, trustworthy, communicative, and approachable. So they're similar. I did add approachable here because it was very close to the response for communicative. The top management styles are strategic and collaborative, the same with the community service, but also team-oriented. As far as abilities and skills, the ability to think strategically is here as well, as well as the ability to be good steward of city resources and challenging the status quo and making changes. What has been added is skill as an active listener. The ability to perform relationships is here as well. And then a tie with that one was the ability to build teams within the organization. So again, very similar to the community survey, little bit of differences. But if you think about it from a staff's perspective, the ability to form those relationships, be approachable, be a team builder, that would make sense, I think, as being a top ability and skill. And then as far as experience is concerned, it's a little bit higher for city management or other local government experience. Private sector experience is 16%, a little bit higher than what the community said. Other, about 4%. Other, about 4%, and there were different, um, examples there, and then academic experience was 2%. So, that's a very quick overview of the responses to the community survey and, uh, the employee survey, if you have any questions.
Commissioners, any questions about that? Pretty straightforward? Okay?
No? Okay. So, I'm going to pass out to you a copy, a hard copy of the profile and then, uh, the ad sources.
Okay, thank you.
The other thing I want to mention too is, uh, throughout the, the process of gathering information, the city staff, Mary Beth and her staff was very helpful. Um, Desiree Foster was kind enough to, uh, drive me around the city for an hour at least, uh, to show me what I was hearing. Um, I really wanted to get out into the community based on what people were telling me and she was very gracious to do that. So, I wanted to just acknowledge, uh, that they were very helpful. So what I'm, uh, passing to you now is a copy of the profile and, um, some ad sources that I'm recommending you consider. A few of them you'll see are highlighted in yellow. Um, there are specific state associations that you might want to consider advertising indirectly. And if you do want to include those, they'll put you a little bit over the budget that we have set aside. If you don't want to include those, um, one of the things that I've done is I've run a list of communities between the population of about 100,000 and a million. And Ryan, my colleague, who's going to be helping me a little bit, is, uh, going to help me do some direct outreach to those communities for people we know or that are in similar roles, that may not see the ad through some of the traditional sources. So, I don't know, I, I know that I did receive a text this morning from a Commissioner with some additional, um, suggestions for the profile and I can, I've looked at that and I have a response. I can go through that quickly. Um, but what I would like to do at this point is see if you have any questions about the profile other than the new ones that were raised and about the ad sources.
Okay, so Commissioners, um, hopefully you've had a chance to look at the language that was sent out, um, in draft form. Uh, and now's an opportunity to ask any questions. You didn't have a, a chance to send to Joellen or additional comments, uh, so that we can hopefully flush those out today so that she can move forward. So, uh, I'll just open it up. Okay, Commissioner?
I'll just make a quick comment. Um, Joellen, as you're going through, are, are you gonna go through this today?
Uh, no, I wasn't, I wasn't going to because everyone had, saw the text.
I think what we can do then is we can talk.
Okay.
Um, face to face. That was my, um, email that I sent over that it was in draft form, that I thought I'd sent last week. So when I went to pull it for my records and conversation today, I realized that I hadn't sent that. So, we can just talk. You don't have to go through that because I know we're pressed for time and all of that.
Well, the, the objective is to finish it today. Some of the items that you raised are already in the profile.
Where?
Um, there was one in particular, which was your first point, and I'll just back up. Um, after today, one of the things that I mentioned when I was here last is I, I think it would be important to write some questions that we can give to the candidates that they can respond to about their experience in very specific areas. The first point that you're raised, you raised, I think is a question.
Okay.
Um, so I think we've, I tried to write this in a way that was very general, um, but very balanced as far as perspectives that were received. But, uh, I will draft those questions. I will send them to you. And then you can give me some feedback, but, you know, this is before the closing date in December, if they're the ones you want me to, to give to the candidates that we'll screen to respond to. Okay, so, and then they can get pretty specific. The other thing, um, that was raised, just really quickly, the fact that it's a nonpartisan board, I can add that today. Um, the collective bargaining experiences, I mentioned there's the number of unions and the ability to, to maintain relationships with unions, so that is, is in there. And I can do that through the vetting process as well. The history of Grand Rapids, I received that from the historical society, so if that's incorrect in any way, I, I pulled that from a, a source and I sourced it in the, the profile, so I'm, I'm, I'm not sure exactly what to do with that. I can switch the order of some festivals you suggested. The transformation plan comment, uh, I put a link to the transformation plan. There's a few links in here.
Okay.
And they're active links and I checked them and they do work because it is, it's, it's very, very voluminous and I read it and, but I could not do it justice. I tried to highlight it, but if somebody really wants to drill into that, they could, there's a link to that.
And just for context, um, colleagues, I think part for the transformation plan, it was, there is narrative regarding the transformation plan and, um, my suggestion was to perhaps pull graphics in because it's so complex so that people would understand it graphically. I think every time we've gotten an update to see, um, how we've made change graphically has been easier to understand than kind of in written form. So thank you for that. The links I think will probably help.
Yeah, I, I, it would be, it would be a minor dissertation if we kept, you know, it's just, it's very difficult. And then just two other quick points. You mentioned the city manager's 12-point plan. I can add, uh, and develop in conjunction with the, the entities that you highlighted.
Okay.
To make sure that that's there. Um, and then the last point was the appointees under the, I saw the city and that's my, there is, I did mention city in here, city council instead of city commission. I apologize for that. Um, I will change that. But also, I, I mentioned that the city, um, the, the commission has appointees other than the city manager. So I did mention that. I'm not sure what else I can get to, to clarify that, so that was...
Well, I, I think in, and I don't remember exactly where it was written, but there is a reference that, um, the CEO is responsible for all employees. But the city commission has four appointees and some of those appointees have employees that are city employees. And so I think to make sure that that was clear about what's, what responsibility the city manager has versus the other three appointees, I thought that needed to be.
Okay, so just to clarify, I, I mentioned that the, that you appoint the clerk, the treasurer, and the attorney.
Mm-hmm.
You, is your staff appointed by the city manager or by you? I thought it was the city, that's, because I said it, the, the city manager appoints virtually all employees with the exception of the three. Is that inaccurate?
Okay.
No, that's, that's accurate.
Okay, that is...
And I, I think, um, I know it's a little, it's a little confusing, that Commissioner, I, does the org chart in the back help?
Oh, I don't know many...
Does I, when I, I thought that that was helpful.
Okay.
Because it shows that the city treasurer and city clerk and city attorney is, is, um, in line with or appear to the city manager. Does that help?
Well, I think it, it, it helps that to highlight the roles of the four appointees, but it does not specify the departments that are underneath those other appointees. So if you look at this, all employees aren't represented. And so my point is, there are other employees that report to our appointed officials and that, you know, just making sure that that piece was clear is all I'm trying to accomplish.
So maybe even just adding that each of, and the other three appointed officials have departments that they oversee.
And that's, that was part of my comment.
The attorney, yeah, yeah, I hear what you're saying.
Because this is the, this is the staff of the city manager, which makes perfect sense for the purpose of this, but just to kind of help someone to know that there are other employees.
Yeah.
Who are part of, um, city staff within the organization.
Okay, alright.
Good, okay.
And the organization, and thank you too to Amy for helping with the organizational charts. If you, it's a very big organizational chart. It was difficult to get the graphic in, but if you're, if you're okay with it being horizontal, which really shows a lot of detail, we'll leave it as is.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, okay.
I say leave it as is.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, so in response to making those changes, uh, Commissioners, any other recommendations? The hope, again, the hope today is to finalize this and Joellen plans to get it out publicly tomorrow and start moving forward with the ad placements and the, um, advertising. Commissioner?
I know you mentioned, uh, you know, public-private partnerships and working with, uh, other partners. Could you just also maybe add something about, uh, Grand Rapids Public Schools? They're just a longstanding partner of the, to continue the relationship with the school system. I think that's important for us.
Absolutely. And then, Joellen, regarding the location, the, um, his, historical piece that you added in, I'll look at it because this was last week when I was reading. I'll look to see which specific companies were listed as, um, I think Greater Grand Rapids versus the city proper. And I'll let you know what those are because I think there were some that were listed in, within the city that are not within the city. And we just want to make sure that, that we're clear on that. And I can, I'll quickly try and look to see what names are in there and, and give that to you today as well.
Alright. Any other final comments?
Uh, just a word of thanks. This is a really nice document for us to have. When we're out meeting with the public and I appreciate, I see that the comments that I made, I only have three additions and they are in here. Thank you for that as well.
So Commissioners, I know we have a full day, but I wanna be really, I want to give Joellen what she needs so that she can get moving on, um, starting the advertising tomorrow. Um, so if you can have feedback to Joellen by...
I, I will be in my office this afternoon. And I'm an hour behind you, so if I close your business day, I can finish today.
Okay, so if you can get any final comments or edits to Joellen by 5 o'clock today, um, that would, and then Joellen can make those amendments. And then, uh, I am assuming by the head knots that we're good with having her move forward on getting this, starting the advertising tomorrow.
Good to go.
Okay?
One quick question. So when, when this was sent to us, it was just the text. As I'm looking at the graphics that are in here, the pictures, uh, I'm seeing a lot of downtown. That's great and amazing. Um, but I am curious to know if there's equity across all wards and pictures representing, um, all wards in here. I don't have time right now to kind of look at this, but as I'm looking...
We did try to pull some from the neighborhoods, including some of the parks, uh, and, uh, I know Amy helped with that and Steve Guitar did as well. Um, so I know that there was, there was an effort to make sure that there were some pictures from neighborhoods, but we can, we can take a look at that. I know there's a west side one, there's a heart side one. Couple of parks, pools. If you have specific pictures you would like added, um, or if you can think of any that we may have already on deck that Steve may have, uh, and you want those included, then also send those, because I'm sure we can swap some of those.
I'll just need to know what you, which pitch you want to replace with which pitch. Just so I'm clear and I, I do it to your satisfaction.
Okay.
Does that sound good? So everyone has their marching orders. Please get that to Joellen by 5 o'clock today and then...
I know we're meeting until 5 today, right?
Yeah, I know. Well, there will be a little break, economic development project team, because you, uh, you'll have that, you'll have that time. Um, I think I'm gonna ask, uh, the city manager to adjust something, so, uh, alright?
Can we eat somewhere in there too?
Yes, hopefully we can. Alright, any final things? Commissioners, we're good with this? This will be posted tomorrow? Alright?
Are you comfortable with all of the ad sources?
Oh, that's a good question. Commissioners, uh, should we add the, the three, uh, that are highlighted? Do you have a preference? Yes? Small dollar amount?
Just do it.
Sounds like yes. Great, thank you. Thanks, Joellen.
Joellen should be commended for capturing everything I do in only 10 pages.
Well, I, you have big shoes to fill, I will say.
We know that, yes. Thank you. That's why we hired you to help us. So, um, Commissioners, real quickly, I have two items that I need a motion to suspend the rules for. Uh, so can I get a motion to suspend the rules for both of these items?
移到
Support? Alright, all those in favor of suspending the rules say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, okay, mo, uh, the rules are suspended. We have two things before us. One is to bring forward, uh, meeting, let's see, where are my notes on this? A meeting for the appointments committee, uh, to review end-of-year appointments. And that would be scheduled for the 20th. So, can I get a motion for that? I think that's pretty self-explanatory.
移到
Support.
Alright, all those in favor of, uh, setting, um, a committee on appointments meeting for November 20th at 3:00 PM, say aye.
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 Those opposed, it carries. Alright, that will take place in room 601. And then the other item for suspend the rules, um, this is a walk-on Commissioners, and the reason it's a walk-on is because the Community Relations Commission met on Thursday night, so they weren't able to review this and weigh in on it, um, before the deadline was for setting this agenda. So it's the only reason that it is, um, not on the agenda already. Uh, so this is a walk-on to, um, to, uh, it's a resolution approving an equal services city commission policy. So can I get a motion?
移到
Support? Alright, Patty Cottrell's here, but I also am gonna invite Tommy Allen, our Chair of our Community Relations Commission, to come forward. And then any other members from the CRC who is here with us today who would like to come forward, you're welcome to join Patty at the front. Sorry, we're running late today.
No problem. Thank you for putting this on and, and we appreciate, um, both the diversity and inclusion office and the CRC appreciate this being added to the agenda. Um, what's before you is a city commission policy that the CRC and staff have been working on since approximately November of last year at the behest of the mayor and city manager. Um, this policy is designed to set forth the city's commitment to ensuring equal services to all persons regardless of immigration status or national origin. Um, the CRC put together a subcommittee that included Tanya, Tommy, and Teresa, who is standing in the back, Teresa Hendrick's pitch, um, to really review and look at other policies, other, other, um, activities and things like that so that we could get a good idea of what we wanted to bring forward. Um, this policy is a result of that as well as community meetings and, um, inter, interviews and, um, communication with law enforcement with, um, our own city attorney's office. And thank you Anita and Lindsay Bondi for all your help in putting together this policy. Um, so, with that, we ask for your support and your approval to bring this policy forward.
Alright, I think I'll ask Tommy Allen, uh, Chair of our Community Relations Commission, to say a few words. I'll see if our city attorney wants to weigh in. I know you've been working, um, on this as well. Uh, Tommy, do you want to say a few words about this?
Sure, um, I, I think it's really interesting that the, the path of this policy over the last year has been, um, quite fascinating of a ride in many ways. Uh, the experience, first policy the CRC to bring forward since I've been in the commission of this nature, but also the, the, uh, opportunity to meet with so many different groups in the community, whether it's community members who have questions about IDs, how they're treated at traffic stops, firsthand accounts from our commission members, but also sitting down with the Kent County sheriffs, undersheriffs, excuse me, uh, as well as our prosecuting attorney, working with our chief and having many conversations as well about this policy with Anita. Uh, in fact, one really late night that we sat up and worked on this. Um, but I think the thing to remember too is that oftentimes those voices, those faces that we think would come forward would be often there. But in this case, we know this is a very vulnerable population. It's a population that it's very difficult for them to come out. I don't think people maybe fully realize, you know, in passing a policy say like this, it does ensure somebody that they feel comfortable being in Grand Rapids, knowing that a police officer's uniform is not going to violate their rights. Uh, but most importantly, what's in, important I think for me to remember is that we live in a big county and that we would like to invite the county along with us on this journey to begin to really think about the policies of the people who call Grand Rapids their home, who are guests here, and how we, uh, treat them. It often speaks about who we are. Also gonna say, I know a lot of you have been inundated with a lot of support letters. Um, I want to say just a personal perspective, someone who is a person who loves history, the history of the civil rights community was not won just by the people who were impacted. It was Jewish members, Christians, walking alongside people, saying, "We understand you, we hear you, we're going to be your ally." And so I know that you faced a lot of influx of emails over the last couple of months. Um, just know that it's really important to know that allyship is something we talk about in building equity in our community. And I'm really happy to say I'm, um, proud of all the work we've been able to do so far. I know it's not an easy policy, but I'm grateful. We're at this moment, we have a chance to answer questions, but talk to you about it more in depth.
Great, thanks. Any other comments? Alright, I'll turn, no, I'll turn to our city attorney. Uh, do you want to say a couple of words? I know you've been actively involved in this.
Certainly. Um, I'd like to say I appreciate working with, um, Tommy and the members of the CRC and their commitment is, needs to be complimented because they were very persistent and very, um, committed to, um, this, the development of this policy. Um, one thing you did say that I have to agree with, that it is, it is difficult. Um, part of what we do is public service... Part of what we do as public servants is balance, and we have to balance what's for the best interests of the people in the community, but also what's for the best interest of the city as a whole. And sometimes that's easy and sometimes it's very difficult. And this is one of those times when it was a little bit difficult, a little bit challenging, I should say. But we worked together and came up with what we believe is a good product and the start of, um, where we'd like to head in the future. And that's to, um, have a community that does feel, um, welcomed and safe in the community. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Other comments, Commissioner?
Yeah, um, Mayor, I'd like to be, uh, focused if we could on page two. I think the, um, Police Department is, is really from at least, from what we've heard of, of comments here, or even what was shared this morning, seems to be, um, where, where it kind of everything hinges on. Um, so I think that's, that's where I, I guess I would like to understand what the, um, impartial policing policy does now and what this does different and what does that add to what, what we're doing? That's my main question.
Um, Anita, do you want to, do you want to take that one? The impartial policing policy is a, is a, is a departmental policy of the Grand Rapids Police. So this, this policy will enhance and it honors that impartial policing policy so that it, it continues to ensure that folks coming to Grand Rapids and folks that are in Grand Rapids, um, whether documented or not, are treated equally and fairly.
But does it, does it change anything on it though, or?
Not in, not in this, not in the department's policy, no.
Okay.
It's a, my understanding, I asked the same question, is that it's aligned with the policy that was already passed. And that, I know the Chief is here in the back, uh, if he wants to speak to that as well. It's a, it's an important question, so. Welcome again, Chief.
I'm sorry, the question specifically is?
What, what would this do to, to change the impartial policing policy or the practice of what you do now?
So I would say what it does is take a, a police department policy and codifies it as a, um, city administration, but as a policy that will affect the city as a whole. So our policy was, went into effect this past summer.
Yep.
And as I understand this policy, it will apply to all city departments, not just police department employees.
So Chief, my understanding, uh, and just maybe you can affirm this, is that this just solidifies and is aligned with what you've already passed under the GRPD impartial policing policy?
That's correct, Mayor. This is consistent with our in-house policy.
Okay.
And, and I guess a follow-up on, on that is, is I'm, is I'm trying to work through, um, some of the, the reasons and, and comments around why this changes so that, uh, people feel safe and, and, and are safe is, is ultimately how does that impact with what really is a, um, you know, immigration status is, is defined by the federal government, right? Not the city. So what, what does that change as far as how we cooperate or don't cooperate with federal government or not? Because we're, we're still bound by certain things that I, I just don't think that we resolve with this policy. Is that fair to say, or?
You know, Commissioner, that, that's very fair to say. I mean, we can adopt a policy that affects the way we police our community, which is we don't prioritize immigration enforcement.
Correct.
We're a municipal police department, we're here to provide a service to all of our residents. That being said, um, our policy in no way ties the hands of either the county, MSP, or any of our federal, um, cohorts in law enforcement from coming in and enforcing immigration, uh, laws.
Okay.
Commissioners, other questions or comments? Commissioner Allen?
I spoke about this, I'm not going to go at length, but I spoke about this at our last commission meeting. Sometimes it's frustrating as a city commissioner when we see issues in the community come about that we can't affect. So, you know, we're talking, we, we spent a lot of time, or we're going to spend a ton of time talking about housing. You know, we don't build houses. We can provide incentives and policies and all those kinds of things. And from my perspective, from where I live, where I work, what I do, the fear amongst our Hispanic residents is, is measurable. It's serious. Grand Rapids, I see John Hemholt here, Grand Rapids Public Schools is facing it. I know police officers that are actually escorting kids to school along Granville Avenue as they walk to Cesar Chavez School because their parents are afraid to leave their house, so they're sending their five and six-year-olds walking down Granville by themselves. Mercy Health is talking about, um, 25 to 30% Hispanics not showing up for their health appointment. We hear comments from our police department where there's a crime committed in a Hispanic neighborhood and they're not getting the kind of cooperation or reporting back that they should get because they're fearful of cooperating because they don't know what it's going to do. This is a very serious issue that affects a very large percentage of our population. And if we can pass a policy, words matter. And once this passes, which I'm hoping that it will, um, and I'm hoping it passes unanimously, but once this passes, this gives folks who work in these communities something to put up and say, "Look, the city passed a policy." Now, the, I'll end, I'll end by saying this and that this doesn't, as Commissioner Schaefer talked about, this doesn't limit what happens with our federal and our state and our county entities. And I am very concerned about ICE and their work in our neighborhood. I've lived on the corner of Madison and Hall for 15 years and I've never seen ICE in my neighborhood. Now, maybe I notice it and they were always there, but there's been three, three ICE raids on the block behind me in the last six months. That's a very serious issue. We can't control that, but we, we need to do whatever we can do within our control to make folks feel comfortable and, um, welcome living in this city.
To your point, Commissioner, the message that I'm hoping residents will take from today's, uh, action is that if they need law enforcement help, that they don't, uh, are not reluctant to call Grand Rapids Police Department. If someone's a victim of a domestic abuse, if someone's a victim of a burglary, if a family member goes missing, they need to have confidence to pick up the phone, call 911 so the Grand Rapids Police Officers can respond to assist them in that situation. That being said, you're correct, we're not an island unto ourselves. This will in no way affect what the state agencies, what our federal agencies may do, but I hope it reinforces to our residents what the priorities of the Grand Rapids Police Department is.
And I think it's too, um, I think it's important to say this again, that, um, it's consistent with, with what we're seeing others, um, experience as well. And even recently Commissioners may have seen that our, our Kent County Prosecutor, Chris Becker, is actually working in partnership with Hispanic Center to make sure, to have individuals from victim witness go and meet with victims in the community because, um, individuals are, are afraid to go to the courthouse. So again, I think these are the opportunities that we need to look at. How can we make sure that we're reaching out, especially to victims, to get the support that they need, but also to be protected?
We've also been very diligent in reinforcing the U visa process, which allows the victims of crime to come forward and with a police report, apply for a U visa, which would give them, um, the legal standing here in the country while their case is being prosecuted.
Yeah, thank you, Chief. Commissioner Lanier and then Commissioner Kelly.
Yeah, first, first I was going to, um, thank the Chief for, um, in the summer, um, passing his policy within his department. And then to thank, um, the CRC for their work on developing a policy that impacts all employees or all departments within the city. And so I think that, um, the concerns that we've heard and, and, and the testimonies that we've received through multiple commission meetings, um, we just want everyone to feel safe in our community. And if we can put in writing the practices that we keep, um, this helps people to know that they, this is home and they can feel safe here. And I think Commissioner Allen, you did a really good job at talking about some of the various sectors that are impacted by, um, the fear that exists. And, um, and so I'm happy that we're putting something in place that hopefully will lower the barrier or the fear that people are experiencing so that they can live life in our community. So thank you to everyone for all of your work. It, you know, it is tough receiving a lot of emails, but I hope I did get a chance to respond to every single one of them because I tried to do that, because it's important for people to know that their voice matters. And it was, um, good for me to be able to hear from so many people saying, "Let's just do the right thing." And so thank you, everyone, for all of the time and energy that has gone into this, including you, um, City Attorney, for your efforts in making sure that we follow the right, um, protocol and process. We have the CRC in place, they were working on that. And I know people wanted us to make a decision sooner, but the process is what the process is. And the reason we have the CRC is to be able to vet things such as this for our community. So thank you.
And I think the other thing, just to add on to that, Commissioner Lanier, is that this is not the end. The CRC is, will be continuing to look at welcoming and how we can enhance our various welcoming policies and what, what can the CRC do to make more of our citizens feel, feel the comfort.
Commissioner?
Well, on that note, I think just this morning we passed a policy about the New City Academy. So we're on that track of actually bringing to fruition our, um, being a welcoming city under the Governor's New Americans, um, program. So I think mainly this is just going to, it's going to really help also strengthen the relationship between the community and policing. We are, we've passed a policy this summer, we don't profile. That is something that we've been working on this, um, in terms of our bias work. So it, it really fits with what we're currently doing and just puts an exclamation point on it. So I too thank the Community Relations Commission and Tommy, your leadership there, as well as these faith groups that have come forward, and, and City Attorney, all the work that you've done. Appreciate that very much.
Thank you. All right, I'll turn to Commissioner Jones and then Schaefer, and then I'll call the question.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, um, I think what makes this relatively easy to support is the fact that it was a very, um, it was, it was a, I think a tremendous amount of discernment that was applied. And I want to, um, recognize the, um, the value that was brought to the table by our city attorney. And just this, you know, the, the, really the ability to carry out civility. There was a back and forth between, uh, the CRC, members of the CRC, as well as, um, our city attorney. There was the consistent engagement of law enforcement, uh, there was, uh, the voice of the people. I just think it really spoke to, um, you know, the, the power of civility and the fact that we have something that, uh, there's no doubt that there will be those who may not see it as perfect. I don't think any policy is perfect, but I do think it speaks to the fears of those amongst us, in particular our undocumented brothers and sisters. And so I'm very happy that we're at this place. I know that it, as, as was said by, uh, my colleague, that there are those in the community who wanted this to come quickly. But I think that there was just, um, there was wisdom in having patience and, and making sure that we crossed our Ts, dotted our Is, and had buy-in. Because it's, you know, at the end of the day, it's not just about, um, this being something that, uh, you know, folks can tout as a victory for the people. This is, there are a number of complexities to all of this. And so, uh, the fact that we were able to come together and come to an agreement on language, I think speaks volumes. And so, um, again, I thank you, uh, City Attorney, um, Hitchcock and CRC and staff and Chief, just all. And again, the fact that there were different sets of Is or ACLU and others who have, you know, chimed in, it just, I think again, speaks volumes. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. Right, Commissioner Schaefer, final one?
Yeah, Mayor, I'll just say, I understand what, what everyone's saying in terms of words, words matter. I, I guess my whole point was that actions speak a little bit, a little bit louder. And so when this first came, first came to us, um, one of the main concerns was that a police officer wouldn't be able to ask about, um, immigration status or national origin. Does that address that in this policy, or is that still something they're able, able to ask? Because that's, that's, that was my main, main concern when we looked at this the first time, is that, how does this policy address that?
It's addressed under the, um, vice, vice-based policing policy. So it is, it is addressed and there are situations where officers may ask immigration status.
Okay, okay.
And it's based on the, the policy that the, that the Police Department put forward in July.
Gotcha. Then that was really my overall ultimate, ultimate concern. So I, I can, I will be voting yes for this, but I think it's very clear and I think we should be clear that, in essence, the basic, one of the basic questions that was brought, brought before us is still on the table in terms of officers being able to ask that question. And I think we should be real about what this can and what this can't do. Um, so, and I, and I think it's just, it's just based, based from me, you know, being, being with the seven and a half years that I've had, it's always been around policies that are pragmatic and have real meaningful impact of what's in our scope. And I just feel, I just feel, I understand why this brought before us, but, I mean, immigration's in the scope, ballpark, ball field of the federal government. So I just don't like getting into areas that we can't actually impact, you know, and have that impact long-term. So I just want to make, make sure I stated that. Thanks.
It's very well said, Commissioner. In terms of a pragmatic approach, there are times when it's important for us to ascertain if a suspect, if a victim, if a witness has local ties. And that doesn't necessarily mean just here to internationalize, um, but they're not going to go anywhere in the time it's going to take for us to launch an investigation, obtain statements and the like. So those are questions that are important from a law enforcement standpoint that we'll continue to have the opportunity to ask when needed.
Okay, thanks.
And, and you're right, Commissioner, we can't control everything and that's why this is really specific to city employees and public servants. Uh, so what do we have the ability to impact? All right, uh, any final thoughts? I'm going to call the question then and get us moving on. So.
I completely agree, words matter. And this has taken over 10 months and I want to thank you for your time. And, um, you know, we have always talked about that this is a welcoming city, welcoming city, but I think it's time to put it in, in paper and in a policy so people can for, come forward and people can feel safe, not only the Hispanic community, but all immigrants in, in Grand Rapids. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, Commissioners, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? It carries. All right, thank you all. And I'll add my thanks to the Community Relations Commission, not just for your work on this, but really for all the work that you do in our community. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioners, so a couple of things. We have, uh, a couple more items on our agenda. We're running late, an hour late, unfortunately. But all, everything we talked about today was important. So I am, am asking the, um, City Manager to remove the presentation on the Loose Leaf Collection and move that to our next meeting.
Yeah. Sorry. I suck at math.
All the leaves are gone.
But I know that we have some folks here from out of town. So we have some folks here from out of town. And so I am going to, uh, we'll, we'll try to do this. We have Economic Development Project Team at 12:30, uh, so I'll try to leave, we're going to try to get this done in 32 minutes. So we're going to have a brief update on the River Restoration Project and then the Rose Center recommendations. Uh, so I'll ask the folks from, I'll, let's see, is Richard coming up or Mark?
Yeah.
Okay, so come on up. We'll do that maybe, maybe less than 10 minutes. And then we'll do the Rose Center Fellowship after that. Uh, and then we'll break. Those of us in Economic Development Project Team will go right down to room 601. And then Commissioners, we are back in the Attorney's Office in the, um, library, thank you, the City Attorney Library at 2:00 PM for appointed officials' annual reviews. Okay?
We have to vote on close, huh?
And, you know, I'm going to take, I'm going to take that vote right now. Um, can I get a motion to go in executive session for appointed officials', um, annual evaluations?
Some moved.
All right, it's a voice call, Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Lanier?
Yes.
And yes, okay. So we're good? My city attorney is saying yes, we are. So, uh, brief update on what, where we are with the River Restoration Project. So Mark, you want to fill us in?
Yeah, great, thank you. Um, so we're going to fly through this. Uh, and Rich is going to start off talking about the, uh, restoration with the Grand River. And then Bill Weng from, uh, Weng Associates from Denver, Colorado, could talk about the design guidelines for the trails, uh, river edge trails and the opportunity sites that program the river.
Wonderful.
Thank you, Mark. You know, one of the things that I want to say before I get started is what a pleasure it is to be in Grand Rapids and a pleasure for me to be able to work, Greg, with your staff, Eric, Mark and Jay, they've been great and we'll continue to move this project forward. Very quickly, because I know we're in a hurry, this project is really built on like a three-legged stool. It's about leadership, permission and funding. And as I just talked about, this whole, it's the Grand Rapids Way. When you look at this slide, you see all the partnerships on this slide. When you look at this slide, you see all the partnerships on this slide. This project couldn't exist if that partnership was not in place way before Richard Bishop got in town. And I applaud you for that, because that's what's going to make it work.
Applaud us for bringing it, you to town? So?
Before it been in place, before I bring it, before I came to town. And, but actually applaud you for giving me the opportunity to be in this city. But just give you a quick update on the permission. We certainly have to have a design in place before we can do anything. And we're about 60% finished with the, with the designed piece. A part of that design piece is this whole adjustable hydraulic structure that I'm sure most of you've heard about. And we are well on our way to getting approvals for that because of the hard work that, that the folks at Grand Rapids Whitewater and the city have done. Mark and I went to a little field trip two weeks ago. We went to Waverly, Waverly, Iowa and to Waterloo, Iowa. And this is actually what a real hydraulic structure looks like in place, working. Good response from the folks in that city about maintenance and how it's operated for the five-plus years that they've been in place. So, good, good work going in that direction. The, the mayor and the city and the Great Lakes Fisheries are working on a process to manage this whole piece, and that's another important part of it that's moving forward very quickly. Permits, permits is a big, big piece of this whole project. And we submitted our draft Habitat Conservation Plan back on November the 1st. And I feel like we will be getting comments back very quickly on how we have to deal with the endangered species that we have in the Grand River. We want to be very sensitive to how we deal with that moving forward. And then moving down the road, once we get well into the, the results of the Habitat Conservation Plan, is, is making our application to the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality to get that permit. So, those are the two main permits that we're working with and agencies that we have to work with, moving those forward to have some resolution towards somewhere in late 18. And another piece of the city's process is working with easements. We have about 33 easements throughout the river basin that we have to deal with to get permission to work out in the river and also staging sites to get our work done. Again, great partnership with the city and the city's legal side, working through those processes, and we hope to have that completed sometimes in 18. Funding, that's a pretty important piece of it. The, the total budget cost now is about $44,671,000. The construction cost is right at 33. And then the development cost is right at 12. So, that is the total budget, and we're working with our engineers. At some point in time, we will hire a, working with a partnership with the city to hire a construction manager that will come in and start vetting the drawings that we currently have to see if there's any, any value engineering we can do on the plans. But have to keep in mind that this is a project that's been going since 2012, and it's going to be going through 2024. And then sources of that revenue, we have developed really good partnerships with the state and local governments, and so that certainly will be a part of it. Federal government is really starting to play an important piece of that with the partnership that, that we're working with, with, with our senators and the federal government and how they can help us with this hydraulic, hydraulic structure is very important. And then certainly, again, the Grand Rapids story about what the private sector does so well in this community. Our current pledges are about 31%, right at $14 million. We are in the short throw of getting our capital campaign going. Canary Consulting is doing that for us. We'll have a, a soft campaign in the fall and then really kick it into gear in 18. Anticipated, and I use that word anticipated because now that we've got, we've got our HCP in the, in the agency's hands, they sort of drive the schedule. But it's our responsibility to respond to those, those folks in a, in a hurry, and we will do that. So, hope, hope to have permission, all those submitted in 2017 and 18, and then design completed in 18. And if everything goes to plan, and we will have better indication of this, of this date in the next couple of months, is the permit approval sometimes in 19. There's two permits that have to be approved. We have to get the HCP approved, and then we have to follow that with, with the state permit. So, hopefully, all that'll be done in 19. And then get in the river and start construction, hopefully, and being completed sometimes in 2024. Great opportunity, and it's a great project. And thank you for the opportunity for being here today.
Yeah, thank you.
So, as, first of all, thank you for taking a few minutes. I'll be brief. I'm Bill Wink, and we've been working with Richard very closely to make sure that we build on that resource, which is the river, to make sure that it's a river for all. It's not just about angling and kayaking and boating, but it's something, it's a resource that everyone in the city and in the region can come to as a place to, as a place of leisure and recreation. And I, not the least of which is kind of an economic driver for the city. So, that's really our mission. And to that, to that end, to the, on the leftmost image is a plan that integrates GR Whitewater's plan with GR Forward plan. What isn't as obvious is all the other plans that are also integrated into this. So, that's, that's been our baseline to start with, which is to take all of those plans as a basis for moving forward. The middle drawing really represents one image that talks about how different plans have seen the downtown. And the right image is probably the key, which is our look at what the character zones of the river might be, and we've started to name them, more in terms of how each district has its own sort of individual expression and how then that translates into an overall river plan that is tied together by common elements. For example, we see North Monroe, and the Fish Ladder is being the heart of the river. And so, they're very descriptive, and they start talking about different neighborhoods as well as the overall. So, we're starting to test those ideas. For example, I think, hopefully you were all at Art Prize, we had a pop-up park on the bridge. It was a great success, a great deal of involvement on the part of local students. Over 2,000 people were made contact with by our, by the groups. They got a chance to look at different park types and weigh in on whether it should, should be more natural, more urban, or reflect the character of some of those neighborhoods that are in transition. So, we've got a good basis to begin with. Also, we have an advisory group that we're, we've started to work with, focus groups we've been meeting with, starting in our visit this time, and ongoing collaboration with the core team, which is Mark and other city staff members. So, we're well into it. So, a key effort moving forward are five opportunity sites that came out of the GR Forward plan and, and doing detailed planning on those, the museum site being one of the key elements. The, the idea is that we develop specific plans and cost estimates so that we can start to cycle our thinking into and mesh that with the construction that will, will occur in the river. So, we take maximum advantage of that disruption as the work goes forward. So, to sum up here, this is our schedule, is that right now, we're developing design alternatives for those, those five sites. We're going to continue to meet with focus groups. I can't even, I would, I'd show you the list, but it goes on and on. Also, advisory committee, we'll have plans and cost estimates, hopefully by the end of the year, and, and that the final plans will be in early 18 so that we can kind of move forward into finalizing our design guidelines. So.
I want to put, thanks, Bill, I want to put one plug in for, for Dale Robertson at, at the museum. He and Stephanie Ogren have been instrumental with the students and the museum, hosted our meetings, really had some really good workshops of, of their particular site. So, just want to make, make sure that they're heard here at the, at this meeting today. Any questions?
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? I know we've all been following this. I, you know, the design guidelines, especially as we look at the river's edges, has been a priority. And we've talked about that for a long time, that the redevelopment of the river is important, but it's always the river's edge and making sure that that's connected and accessible and connected to the neighborhoods. So, I'm glad to see this work coming together. And I know we have other partners in the room. Dale, I want to thank you for all of your work, including, I know you're, you're actively engaged in the River Restoration Project as well, and how we're going to use that as an opportunity for learning for children in our community. So, thank you for coming. Sorry, we were running short on time, but we appreciate all that you're doing and, and including, I want to just say thanks for all the work you're doing and getting input for the River for All.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
All right. Oh, can we, Richard or Mark, can one of you send this slideshow to the full commission?
Absolutely.
Great, thank you. All right, Commissioners, now I'm going to call up the Rose Center Fellowship team and let them set up. And I'll just, I'll just remind everyone the, the history here. It was a little over a year ago that I received an invitation to participate in the Rose Center Fellowship. And this was on the tail end of, I shouldn't say tail end, it was a little bit after we went through the GR Forward planning process, had adopted that document as a master plan for downtown. But then also, it was in the throes of conversations about redevelopment of Area 4 and 5. So, the idea came to how do we use the expertise of the Urban Land Institute, other cities, to really think about the redevelopment of publicly owned land to be aligned with the values and the mission and the vision of our master plan. And so, through that, pulled the team together, talked to Chris Larson, asked if he was willing to participate, and specifically look at publicly owned land owned by the DDA. And he said yes. And then we looked at a team, knowing that economic development is really key as we look at projects like this, but then also mobility, because that's a huge issue in the city, and how do we think differently about that? And then Tim Kelly stepped up as the project manager. They've done the bulk of the work. I attended a couple of the sessions. They recently attended the last session and did the presentation. I wasn't there for that. I was briefed afterwards, and then they were invited to come forward and share the presentation with the full city commission, as well as some of the recommendations that they have pulled together based on their experience with the Rose Center Fellowship. So, welcome, and thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, City Commissioners. I know we are running short on time, and we want to spend the bulk of our time on the recommendations, recognizing that many of you have been involved throughout the process. I'm going to skip through the, the kind of how we got to this point very quickly, and then we'll turn it over to the rest of the team to, to walk us through. Before, before I hand it over to them, I will just stress that these are recommendations, ideas that we recognize are going to need some further vetting, but we're excited to present the outcome of our year-long fellowship with you today. So, I'll, I'll jump right into kind of how we got to our land use challenges. The mayor mentioned, we started out this year kind of narrowly focused on a few key publicly owned sites, but recognized really quickly that there was an opportunity to kind of zoom out to a 30,000-foot view and take a look at some of the city policies that kind of govern land use decisions and the impact that they have, particularly around issues of equity. So, we've all been the beneficiary of billions of dollars of development over the past few decades, but we also know that that is not, that progress has not been shared equally by all members of the city. And so, we felt that there was a real opportunity to address that. The Rose Center was instrumental in putting together our panelists. A number of you met, at least some of those folks, experts from around the country, to help come to the city and kind of give us an overview of, of what they saw and observed. This is them trying to imitate the Calder statue up front. So, when they were here back in March of this year, we took them on a tour throughout the city with stops at Link, also over on the west side, brought them in for, or had some focus group discussions with representatives from a variety of organizations throughout the community that have influence within the development process. And then that, that trip culminated in a presentation in these chambers, which I, I hope and believe a number of you are able to attend. For anyone that wasn't able to get there, that video is online. And they, they gave us a number of insights, particularly around the recognition within the city that there are, everyone recognizes there are inequalities that exist, but we may not necessarily have clear definitions or agreement on how to move those forward. On the, the issue of incentives, we recognize that, that the land disposition process is important in driving some of these goals. But in, in many cases, the incentives are used as, as an entitlement, and so we may not be getting, or may not be receiving the full benefit of the real estate activity. And these were the implementation ideas that they also touched upon, those five. But coming out of their, their first trip to Grand Rapids, they gave us a little bit of homework to follow up on and really wanted to make sure that we were continuing to narrow down our focus to that idea that if everything is important, then nothing's important. And so, they really challenged us to come up with three key priorities. So, we did a follow-up survey with participants. We also looked at some of the things that are currently happening in the city. So, not, you know, we wanted to make sure that we were recognizing the good work that already happens on some of these issues and not just focused on, on where we're falling short. And then one of the, the real challenges they put forth with us was to take action immediately. And so, we were able to, on the heels of that initial presentation, embed some of these ideas into the 201 market process. So, we were able to expand the steering committee to bring in some new voices to that process and then also change the evaluation criteria, which I think was a benefit. And then in September, so just two months ago, we brought our panelists back to really focus on our three priority areas that were identified through that follow-up survey. So, issues of mobility, housing and workforce development for some really pointed discussions and conversations, again, with a broad range of community representatives. And the, the ideas that emerged from that process and communication were, are what kind of built into these recommendations that the team are now going to walk you through.
That was impressive.
That was a year, that was a year of work.
Wow. Well done.
All right, so, Mayor and Commissioners, we have a memo for you that will indicate all of the detail behind each of these recommendations. And included in the memo are recommended implementation leads or where these recommendations could be continued or conversations could be continued. The first recommendation is a policy recommendation about the use of incentives and targeting them for geographic use. And specifically, this talks about areas of under or disinvestment that the city has experienced over the past decades and the need to support a growth strategy along transit corridors. And so, aligning the use of incentives to achieve cities equitable economic development outcomes in specific areas of the city. That doesn't mean that we don't use incentives in other areas of the city, but how do we use them to leverage investment in areas of disinvestment that we've seen? Also, we, we recommended that, that these policy changes be incorporated into an economic development plan and strategy so that we can actually have a vision for what we think economic, or equitable economic development looks like for the city and have an encompassing plan that we actually work on. I think we have a lot of great initiatives underway, but there is really no cohesive strategy that staff is really tasked with pursuing. The second is, Josh, we're going to...
So, we're going to pivot, we're going to pivot back and forth. So, the second one is really talking about, so just as we mentioned, you know, where we're targeting the use of those public incentives, it's actually talking about how we can actually develop a vision for transportation, so much like the cohesive narrative that is somewhat lacking related to economic development, for equitable development, there's a similar thing related to transportation. So, the common theme throughout the first site visits, the second site visits, and a lot of the conversations related to, related to development is mobility. So, a big piece of that is really looking to adopt a people-first priority, which many of the recommendations that came forward today related to pedestrian safety are a step in that very direction, as well as a lot of the efforts with vital streets and some of those pieces, but just an overall narrative that ties that vision through all of the different planning processes that have been undertaken. But then really specifically, in going through recently in the Transformation Plan and the Sustainability Plan, tying all the different things, performance metrics, for how we're measuring whether or not we're being successful related to transportation and what we mean by that. Like, what is the vision for the city related to transportation? And then the last one is, this is coming up in a number of different processes, whether it's the website redesign for services, is really addressing the internal city structure for how we deliver transportation services. From a customer experience outside, whether it's the development community or whether it's the neighborhood, it's where do you go in order to get all of your questions and your services answered? We know internally, but externally, it's very difficult for the development community and for the citizens themselves to navigate that structure. So, another piece, just kind of piggybacking on how Kara had mentioned, how we were talking about where we prioritize for use of public incentives, it's really prioritizing the eligible activities themselves. So, there's a lot more detail in your memo about talking into that. But if you look at this little pie chart, it talks about where we were pre-2015, where we currently are in terms of where the majority of resources. So, the largest eligible activity currently, mostly because of the brownfield, is, or, excuse me, surface or structured parking, with the, the rest going to site prep and then a little bit to some of the code requirements. We're proposing that we invert that and we focus on the people-first strategy and a lot of the, the lower-cost public infrastructure that helps support other investments in transportation, pedestrian accessibility, biking, you know, travel demand management and other car, car light supportive activities like car share program that we're working actively on, but really trying to just invert the way in which we prioritize the use of those resources. And not saying that parking isn't important and it still will be a large eligible activity, but really trying to say that the first elements we're trying to support are the transportation elements that are much more supportive for some of the equity challenges, because reducing the cost of transportation, it's the second highest cost that a household has next to housing. So, any way in which we can try to reduce those costs is really critically important in moving forward.
So, the next recommendation is related to the disposition of publicly owned land. And with the creation of the Affordable Housing Fund, we thought of ideas and collected information from other communities that they too have efforts to capitalize financial resources to be available for affordable housing investment in the city. So, one of the recommendations here is, in the event of a city-owned property disposition, that the city commission dedicate a certain percentage of those proceeds toward affordable housing that could be developed within our neighborhoods. So, that would provide us the assets to have a proactive role in securing land in geographically prioritized areas to support affordable housing. prioritized areas to support affordable housing. In addition, we can also use the funds to also secure housing sites where we also have transit. So making sure that those, those housing investments occur where people have access to affordable transit. This one's me too. This is another policy recommendation to ensure more micro-local business enterprise participation, building off the success from Vital Streets and trying to establish increasing requirements for the participation in projects receiving municipal incentives. We can ask that we determine from the development community what's possible and how do we encourage them to stretch their goals as it relates to investing in local business enterprises?
Thank you, Kara. So I'm going to take the next three. And so the, the first one is the establishment of something that we're calling a, a chief participation officer. And this could be a position that the city commission could even amend the city charter to make it a commission-appointed position. But this really reflects what we heard throughout the process, and this is no secret around Grand Rapids, is that there are many opportunities to improve the way city hall, other public agencies interface with citizens. We generally refer to that as, as engagement. And one of the deficiencies that we saw was that there are so many different tentacles of city halls, so many different departments that reach out into the community, and they're managing very different kinds of processes. And so there's no, there's not a lot of uniformity or clarity as it relates to expectation. So the idea is that we, that the, the recommendation is that you could create a position that sort of serves like a city clerk or even a city engineer, where Darlene has the responsibility of certifying an election. You would have a position that certifies the engagement strategy for every plan or process or really moment where citizens are going to be involved in helping to provide recommendations that would shape a process. And that would be a position then would, would work with all of the city departments as well as the development community to create that clarity of process, which is absolutely critical. And then secondly, thinking about this as a twofold strategy to improve engagement, and this is again, not a new idea. This is an idea that was recommended on page 176 of GR Forward, but is also one that is currently being pursued by Stacy South in the city manager's office, is about this idea of a citizen learning institute that could really help to equip citizens and educate them about the development process and how city hall and development processes work and how they can be involved. So really it's an empowerment tool to help to really normalize, I think, the quality and preparedness of different neighborhood and business associations to be able to really provide development community as well as yourselves with instrumental, really, really recommendations that can help to improve development projects to shape neighborhoods. And lastly, and this is something that I think goes without saying, all development projects in, in Grand Rapids, or I should say most, involve the layering of incentives, both local incentives as well as state incentives. And so what, some of the recommendations that we've offered this morning would involve really working with MISTHA as well as the MEDC to amend the way that they administer their own programs. So if we're wanting to, as an example, shift the prioritization for things like brownfield eligibility into distressed neighborhoods, we'd want to make sure that CRP was there as well, that CRP would be a tool that could be accessed by the development community in the same way that it's currently only eligible in the general downtown area. The same is said at, at MISTHA with the QAP and making sure that the rules and regulations that it's using to review the eligibility of affordable housing projects coincide with the city's goals. And in some cases, what we have is affordable housing that gets clustered in areas like downtown, so we have an oversaturation of affordable housing. And that's because mechanisms that MISTHA uses to rate those applications inherently rank, or rank highly those applications that have a high walk score. But that is out of, out of alignment with the city's own community development plan, which proposes a scattered site approach. The map that we showed earlier shows some of those target areas where you want to encourage affordable housing. So the financial mechanism that we recommended is a means for the city to play a proactive role in acquiring those sites. But then you have to work with MISTHA to make sure that its own evaluation process can help to really balance and, and accelerate the city's process of trying to achieve its affordable housing goals. So many of these ideas that we've recommended this morning, these don't cost any money. These are mechanisms that would really just change the policy or the procedure by which you are reviewing applications or administering your own tools. And so they are ideas, each of which probably needs to be vetted further and discussed and really determined its level of appropriateness. But it is ones that we think that we've made recommendation in the memo of, of different places for those, the successive conversations to occur. Again, those are just our recommendations for where we see next steps. I would think the timing is very good, given the fact that you are initiating your own budget process to determine what some of your priorities are. So some of these things like potentially establishing new position obviously has budgetary implications and those are priorities that you'll have to set for yourself. Just three more things I want to mention is that all of the resources associated with the Daniel Rose Fellowship and our journey as a team are available on Downtown Grand Rapids Inc.'s website, so at downtowngr.org. Everything from the original problem statement to the memo that you had today to today's presentation, all of those materials are there, as well as the synthesis of public input that we use to help to shape the policy recommendations that we've offered. And I certainly want to acknowledge many of the folks that are in the audience today, including many of the DJRI board members, alliance members, and our own staff that have been supportive of this journey. And then lastly, the mayor for her appointment for this, this great opportunity, not only for myself, but on behalf of the other members of the fellowship team. I think it's been a challenging experience to rethink the way we utilize our own tools, how to turn a screwdriver into a hammer. But understanding that we wanted to affect different outcomes, we think we need to try to do things differently. And so these recommendations are, are different ideas that you can choose to adopt, accelerate, throw out the window, really it's up to you. But we do think that this is a comprehensive set of recommendations that would help to affect more equitable outcomes through the development process. So with that, I'd say thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. I'm going to turn it over for questions or comments for my colleagues. Commissioner?
I actually just want to make a quick comment. First, thank you to everyone who participated in this and providing us with this document to read through. But I want to pause for a moment and just thank Chris for his fingerprint being on our city. We appreciate all of the work that you've done here and thank you for your service. Thank you for your dedication and thank you for your vision. And I think we will be forever changed for the better because of your presence. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner.
Well said. Commissioner?
Very, very quick comment. I had a chance to meet with some of the folks and get a kind of precursor to this. I am a little further ahead. Some of these recommendations, if you understand the ramifications of them, could be quite controversial, which is a good thing. I've, I've quoted this several times in the first presentation for the Rose Fellowship. They'll say, "We know we're really starting to achieve equity is when the city starts to say no to certain projects." And part of what it's, the implications of what they're saying is we're going to, might have a few more no's in the downtown core, which creates yeses out in the neighborhoods. And that's controversial. So, and I think some of these recommendations, if they're turned into policy, could actually take what we're talking about in affordable housing, in the housing conversation and take it to a whole nother level. So I hope these don't just sit here as recommendations, they don't go anywhere, but they get some legs.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner?
Yeah, to that end, you know, thanks to the group. I, I think to what you said, there's a lot of ideas that, that are in here. I think that some of those who may even want to talk through and ask the manager to add to our agenda, because I, I think that even though their policy recommendations now, we've even have layered some of these on to the initial 201 market analysis too. So I, I think we do need to be thoughtful about how we're moving down that and probably have a good discussion overall, because, because to your point, the market will change. The market hasn't reacted in this way yet, and so it's, it's all unknown whether or not it, it, how it will or won't react. So in that sense, that's what I really want to talk about more. And, and there's a lot here and I'll, Chris, I appreciate you putting it all, all online because I've, I've read some of that stuff and I think there's more to, you know, dive into here. And some of this stuff is probably going to have to be trial period too, because we don't know yet, right, what it'll do. So thanks.
Thank you. And so Commissioners, there are, in, in the memo, you'll see there's recommended leads. So some of these items, I am going to ask Kara to take on over to Economic Development Project Team. Some of them will go to Mobile GR, where we already have a team of individuals that can start to vet this out a little bit more. And then some of the other ones, you know, we'll have to talk about as a body and we can follow up in a, in a work session. So again, these are, these are learnings over, as you said, a year-long journey. I want to thank the four of you. I can tell you, they have put a lot of time and energy into this. I was able to see a little bit of it, but I only saw a small fraction of the work that they did in partnership with the other, with the other three cities. I think it was a tremendous learning opportunity. Connections were made, but also to have the opportunity to work with experts throughout our country, through the Urban Land Institute, I think was a real gift. And again, challenges us to think differently. So thank you all. Thank you for the presentation. I'm sure there will be follow-up questions. If there are, Commissioners, any of you can reach out to any, any of the four, at least for a little bit longer, we can reach out to Chris. And we can follow up and then we'll, we'll go through and we'll have pieces of this, as I said, moved over to Mobile GR Economic Development Project Team. All right. Any final thoughts or questions?
Say goodbye to Chris. We so appreciate all that you've done in this five and a half years. You worked at the speed of light and that's a difficult thing to do when you're working with government. And thank all of you for your work with this project.
Thank you. Nice job. Thank you for the presentation.